Beats Planet.
Yo, 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 yo. What's happening, y'all? This ain't gonna be a long string. Just wanted to kind of touch bases. The, uh, round one of the playoffs just concluded. Damn, that dude Nick Foles got a lot of, got a lot of voodoo in him. You know what I mean? That dude Nick Foles got a lot of, got a lot of magic in him. You know what I mean? He got a lot of that, you know? A lot of that stuff. But at the end of the day, round one of the NFL playoffs 2019 is concluded. It's over with. Done. And, uh, we have our week two matchups. You know what I mean? So I'm going to, I mean, I guess kind of sort of just react and get my thoughts on, on the first round kind of sort of and just, uh, you know, just kind of reflect on what the round two matches are going to be like. Cause, uh, from a Cowboys perspective, I know, um, I know a lot of Cowboys fans, including myself. We, uh, not necessarily rooting for Philly. I don't really like Philly. Not necessarily rooting for them, but, uh, we did have a preference on who we would battle, who we would like to battle in the next round. Now, I don't think there's any more preference after this. Just whoever we run into is whoever the hell we just run into, you know? Um, we've, we've played the Saints, the Cowboys, you know, when I say we, you know, they've played the Saints already. So, uh, you know, we've done that before, but I, I really think we wanted to crack at the Rams, man. We, you know, we owe the Rams one. Uh, they, they didn't put Todd Gurley in the, in the, uh, in the, uh, uh, first team All-Pro over Zeke while Zeke leading the league in rushing and things like that, man. You know, even sitting out week, week 17 or whatever. Um, I think a lot of Cowboys fans would prefer to, uh, play the Rams first. And then if we gotta play the Saints in the next round, assuming that we make it there, then so be it. The way I see it, the way I see it, um, I think this was bound to happen, man. This was bound to happen, bro. Us, uh, us running into the Rams, you know? Just being able to... Okay, cool. Just, uh, just, just being able to play those guys in California. I know it's a lot of Cowboys fans in California. Uh, Cowboys go to Oxnard for every single training camp every year and, um, every single, um, every, uh, training camp every year. And I know it's a gang of Cowboys fans out there. So when they have to travel to LA, it'll be like home. It'll, it'll, it'll be like a home game for them. It's probably gonna be more, more Cowboys fans than Rams fans there. So that'll be an interesting little, little, uh, little deal. Asleep Gamer dropped a deuce in the super chat salute to you, sir. Uh, what do the Eagles do with, uh, Foles or Wentz? Man, the Eagles said that they, uh, that, you know, they gonna put Foles on the market. Even though they've only had one playoff quarterback in the past two years, they, they say they gonna, they gonna, um, they gonna try to put, put my mans on the market. So I don't know, man. I, I mean, I'm, I'm really, I'm real interested in like, you know, like when I'm running an offense, man, I'm really, I'm really more so, uh, leaning towards what works. You know what I mean? Like talent is cool. I like Carson Wentz. Carson Wentz is very talented, but man, Foles gets the job done, bro. Foles didn't blink. Now, Foles ain't the best in the world, but Foles has a little something in him. And if you got a team that can keep Foles in the game, we saw how, how, how efficient Foles could be. Efficiently. You know what I mean? Like he, he did turn the ball, he, uh, turned the ball over a little, I think he, uh, he turned the ball over? Turned the ball over? He, he, he had a lot of questionable plays. I'll say that. He had some, some questionable plays and I was kind of in and out or whatever, but, um, the result is all that matters. The result is all that matters and he has more playoff wins than Carson Wentz at this point, you know? Now, who's to say that if Carson Wentz would've played this game, he would've won? I don't know. But, um, Nick Foles came in and beat the Rams in the, the last game of the season. They beat the Redskins. They came and beat the, they beat the Saints as well, I believe? Or they put up a good, um, they put up a, a good fight against the Saints. I don't know, man. Uh, you know, Ali in, uh, chat box said, "Sound like you describing Dak." Um, that's fair. That's fair. I just, I, I was saying to myself, man, Foles got some of the same stuff that, that Dak got in him, man. That, that, that clutch stuff, that don't blink stuff. You know what I'm saying? So, uh, Chris Jackson in, uh, chat box, "We're going, going back, back to Cali, Cali." Absolutely. And, um, hey, man, if you would rather play somewhere, you would rather play in California than to, you know, than to go to New Orleans, you know? Um, now what happens after that? Hey, man, you gonna have to, you know, play, play, play some of the best at some point, right? Whether it be the Saints or whether it be another fight with the Eagles, it'll be a totally different fight by that time. Whoever the Cowboys end up, end up playing, um, but, uh, but we got the Rams this week. So you can expect me and your other friendly neighborhood Dallas Cowboys Youtubers to, um, to really, uh, to really start to, start to, uh, breaking that thing down. Um, so I've been kind of just waiting on my film session plugs to come through, you know? Just waiting on my guys to, to drop the film, put it up so I can go ahead and, you know, pull that footage and get it out to the masses. Uh, I've been waiting on that and, you know, soon as I get it, um, the masses will get it, you know? You will, uh, you will, uh, get the update. So if you're new here, man, hit that subscribe button, man. Hit the subscribe button, hit the notification bell so you know when I drop random film sessions and live streams in the middle of the week. Um, I will be dropping some, um, some college film, some draft film, uh, but not as much though, cause Cowboys still in it. So I'm pretty much still involved with that, but, um, you know, soon as I'm done with Cowboys stuff, I'll try to get some more draft film out. But, uh, if your team in the, in the playoffs or whatever, you know, you're, you're probably not, not necessarily in a rush to, to, uh, deal with, uh, draft content anyway. Um, so let's just, let's just think about this, right? The, um, let me, uh, touch on the games bit by bit. Let me just, uh, touch on, touch on the, uh, the, the winners and losers of, of, of each game and then we'll cross that road whenever we get there. If you want to call into the show, the number is 515-739-1285, access code 309104. If, um, if you want to call in, just to, you know, express yourself, you a fan of any of these teams that won or lost this week, you can, um, call in, talk about that. Or if you want to react to next week's games, you could do that, you know? It's pretty much y'all show. You know, we cross that road whenever we get there, but, um, man, 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 uh, can we have a moment, silence for the teams that ain't here no more, man? I'll say this, man. I'm a Cowboys fan and I'm really only in it for the Cowboys, right? Like I only really care about, about our, about our progression through the playoffs and the, the, the betterment of our team. That's all I'm really worried about. Um, but man, shouts out to Coach Evans, man. Coach Evans is my guy. Um, he's our Ravens correspondent. He's, uh, he's gonna be in the, uh, he's gonna be in my Illuminati project, you know, as the Ravens film dude. Uh, he's coming up, man. The, uh, the, the Ravens took a, took a rough little, took a rough little loss today, man. Ah, they took a rough little loss today. Salute to the Baltimore Ravens. They, they fought though. They, 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 they fought to the end, man, but at the end of the day, Lamar Jackson looked like a young player. He looked like a young guy. Um, and maybe if it wasn't for the, for the turnovers, man, this, this, this thing would've been different. This thing would've been different, man. RIP to the Ravens, bro. So soon, man. So soon, so soon. Um, but the LA Chargers, they, they move on to the next round, man. They continue to play. Uh, they have the New England Patriots, uh, the next, the next, uh, the next round. So it is what it is there. The, um, Seattle Seahawks. I'll say this about the Seahawks, man, and they deserve this moment as well because their fans were, were pretty humble through this experience, I'll say. You know, uh, Seattle Seahawks never, you know, they, they didn't give me, give me any, 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 any problems or whatever, you know? They, 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 they showed up, they humble. Hey, Vah, whoever wins, they win, da-da-da, salute. And I very much salute Seahawks fans in that way. They showed up, they fought hard, they played even harder. Um, Cowboy W, man, nothing but respect to the Seattle Seahawks. They were, they were respectful to me, I will be respectful to them. Um, as far as the, um, Dallas Cowboys, we're moving on to the next round. We're gonna travel to, um, Los Angeles to go play the Rams. We're gonna go play the LA Rams. Um, for the Houston Texans... Shouts out to Captain Andrew Luck, man. I gotta tell you, Nuke, Nuke Hopkins had to change his pants at halftime, man. He just couldn't get the ball going, man. That, that offensive line was trash, man. All you Texas fans that was talking that cash, say something now. Say something now. Shit goofy ass. Yeah, the Indianapolis Colts are gonna move on to, uh, play the Kansas City Chiefs in the next round. So, um, you know, salute to Captain Andrew Luck, salute to those guys. The Colts, man, looking better on defense, very vicious in the run game, man. So we'll see, we'll see what they do. That'll be an interesting go. That'll be an interesting thing to observe moving forward, but, um, and last but, but not least, um, the, the Philadelphia Eagles. Um, they came in and, uh, did their clutch thing versus the Bears, can have a moment, you know, for, you know, for the Bears. Salute to my guy Steven Benzick, man. Big fan of the show, big, big fan of the show. He calls in all the time and, you know, me and him actually envisioned a Cowboys-Bears Super Bowl, I mean, uh, NFC Championship, you know? So, um, we gotta try to carry that torch for him, man. You know, the Cowboys gotta make it through the playoffs and make it to the Super Bowl for Steven Benzick, you know what I'm saying? Cause the Bears aren't here, the Bears aren't here to make it, man. So young, so young. Um, they, they, they fought hard, man. They fought well. Just wasn't enough, man. Nick Foles did that voodoo shit he did and, uh, the Philadelphia Eagles are moving on to play the New Orleans Saints. So, um, salute to those guys, man. Salute to everybody that made it, man. Cowboys versus the Rams, Eagles versus the Saints, Patriots versus the Chargers and Colts versus the Chiefs. That is your week two NFL, uh, playoffs in, uh, the division rounds. So, uh, good luck to everybody that made it. RIP to all those that, um, that couldn't make it. To the Texans and, um, hey, man, we're back to our regular scheduled programming. Uh, let's get into the phones, man. If you want to call into the show, 515-739-1285 is the number to call in, access code 309104. Hundred grand, what's happening, bro? How about your Cowboys, man?
Hey, man, let me tell you something.
Yes, sir.
I told you, Eagles, Cowboys, Jerry's World. NFC Championship game. Cowboys beat the Eagles three times. Sweep. I, I, I'm telling you. I've told everybody this, man. Before the playoffs, as soon as I said, "Oh, the Eagles big playoffs?" Listen, never been done. Well, hasn't been done that often. You beat a team three times?
I will say, it's a very grand notion to think about. And the more pieces come together, the more I would lose sleep about it, you know? Um, so the Cowboys and the Rams are gonna be the Saturday game. Assuming that the Cowboys take care of business versus the Rams, Hundred Grand, I'm not gonna lie to you. I'm gonna be sitting up watching that damn Eagles and the Saints game, screaming to come back to Jerry World, bro. You all, and I'm gonna try to, and I'm gonna be there. I'm gonna be there, bro. Regardless, I'm gonna be there. Fam, that's an interesting notion, my guy. It's an interesting notion and it's one that we all been looking for. And the pieces kind of been falling into place. If the Cowboys had a preference on how, on how to get there, we always said, "Hey, man, we'll beat Seattle, the Eagles will find a way to beat the Bears, uh, we'll, we'll, we'll put our foot on Jerry Goff's throat, Eagles find a way to figure some shit out versus the Saints and we'll come back home and do it again."
Think about it.
Do it for the East, man.
Home game. No need to cut you off, I know this is a show.
Go ahead, bro.
Home game, we win. LA, home game. I don't give a damn what nobody say, that stadium is gonna be full of Cowboys. I'm saying, you know this, we run that way. Home game number two. Then you go back to Jerry's World, home game. Who we playing in the Super Bowl? I don't care. We gonna win the Super Bowl. I don't care who the hell we play. We winning. I'm telling you that, dream matchup in the Super Bowl, Cowboys-Patriots. You know how long people been wanting to see that? Who really America's team? Cowboys or the Patriots?
One week at a time, man. One week at a time.
I'm, I'm just putting it out there so when it happens, come back and tell me. I put it together. I've been telling you this now.
Feel you.
I've been telling you this now. I'm telling you.
Yeah.
What?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, listen, man, listen.
Yeah, I know, right? Um, it's, it's a, it's a fun time to be a Cowboy, man. You know, I always try to encourage Cowboys fans to live in the moment. I always encourage them to soak up everything that's going on right now because if we, if we BS and complain through it, then we're gonna miss it and it's gonna be gone. And next thing you know, basketball is gonna be the only sport that's on TV, you know what I'm saying? Um, we need to soak in all this, all this good, all these good feels, man, all this good mojo, man. It's cool.
They not gonna give Dak his props till he win the Super Bowl? Then, alright, alright, they gonna accept him now.
That's crazy.
Everybody got their different ways of playing.
Yeah.
Everybody is not a drop back, throw for 400, 500 yard quarterback guy.
Right.
Everybody is not that, especially this new NFL with these dual threat quarterbacks. You can't sit back in the pocket no more. Those days is over.
Yeah.
If you can't, huh, you in trouble.
I think, I think, I think people gonna understand that the win is the only thing that matters, you know? Uh, you know, the, the same Dak Prescott haters that were saying, "Oh, 250, you know, yards passing ain't enough." Dak threw for less than 250 yards last night. You know what I'm saying? It's just that, it's just that, you know, he got the W and he was efficient enough and, you know, it is what it is at that point, man. He, he threw what, 233, uh, 233 yards? That's, that's not, that's not a big crazy number, but we got a job done, man. We, uh, we, uh, ran for a touchdown, set up Zeke for another one, man. It's, it's W's, man.
Everybody gotta eat, everybody gotta understand, man. All because the media make it about the quarterbacks. It's not about the quarterbacks. It's a team. Zeke ate. If Zeke didn't do what he was doing yesterday, we would've been in trouble. If Coop, Coop ate, Coop ain't do what he was doing, we would've been in trouble. That defense, phew. Come on, man, it's a team game. It ain't just about the quarterback, man.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
I mean, look at, look, 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 look at Baltimore, man. They kind of run that same type of formula we, that we did.
Sure.
And what happened?
Sure.
Now, Dak is better than my man. Dak way better than my man. I don't, they ain't even have my man throw no, no type of pass. No type of balls. And ain't nobody going down his throat, "Ha, he can't throw the ball." Why he ain't throw the ball today? Why he ain't throw the ball? Why he always running?
Because the Bear, the, the Ravens fans are grateful and they understand that just because your quarterback got arm talent, don't mean you can win with them. They understand that. You know, you know, um...
You know, you know why? Cause they had Joe Flacco with the arm talent, maybe.
Sure. Yeah, 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 yeah. Absolutely. Um, 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 Matt Ryan ain't playing ball this week, man. Ben Roethlisberger ain't playing ball this week. Matt Stafford, they're not playing ball this week and all those guys are, are better than Dak Prescott, you would say, but win's the only thing that matters. Win, win, win is, winning is the only thing that, that, that matters in this league, bro. I'll take it.
Winning and being clutch.
Yep.
And that's what Dak got. That's, that's the trait he got. He is clutch and he, he don't get flustered. As long as it's time on that clock, he gonna try to win that game.
Yep. And I'd rather have that.
He gonna try to win that game.
I would much rather have that, but...
And all them quarterbacks you just named who don't got that, they just throw balls, that's it. They don't got that. You know what? We gonna win this game. They don't got that. They don't have it. They don't. You know? But, you know, Cowboy Nation, man, enjoy this ride. Enjoy this ride. Cause it's, it's beautiful, man. It's beautiful. Stop complaining, enjoy the ride.
Yeah.
You know, we got Cowboy Nation out there that wanna see the fall, cause they wanna see everybody get fired. You wanna see everybody get fired and somebody else win the Super Bowl and it's another year wasted. Nah, fam.
That's crazy.
Nah, fam, nah, uh-uh. If we can, if people get fired, that'd be, and then people get fired.
Right, right. Absolutely. Hey, appreciate it, Hundred Grand. Thanks for calling, bro. Yeah, his, his phone went all the way out. Oh, his phone went all the way out. Let's, uh, let's get back to the phones. JR, what's happening, man?
What's going on, Vah, man? Uh, just called in, man. I want to know what you think about these, uh, uh, next matchups, uh, coming next weekend.
Yeah, man, we got the Rams coming up, man. Bring me Gurley. You know what I'm saying? Uh, he's been, he's been resting for four weeks at this point. He's gonna be fresh. Jerry Goff, he's been sitting down like, you know, uh, we, 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 as a team, we saw what happens when a high seeded team that's had a few weeks of rest goes against a lower seeded team that's hot. You know what I mean? We saw that in 2016.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying? And there was, and there was a piece of me that was kind of glad that we got a chance to play in the wild card and that all of our games kind of meant something all the way to week 17. You know what I mean? So it, it, it's just, it's just, whether, whether people believe in momentum and that, man, but constantly playing means something. Constantly playing these games means something. So Cowboys having meaningful games in week 15, 16, 17 and, uh, and wild card week, I think, I think it mattered. And hell, man, we, we look, we look, we look pretty good, uh, versus the, uh, versus the Seahawks. I mean, we had our mistakes, sure. You know, you know, some, some things to clean up, but every team got, got something they can clean up on. But I will say for the most part, we looked good. And, um, hell, the Rams been sitting their ass down, so we gonna, we gonna go to their house and, and play them, which is basically our house. You know, we got more, more, more fans in California than they do and, um, you know, we'll see what happens, man.
Yeah, uh, I just wanted to share a couple, uh, my thoughts of, uh, there's something you always say, um, when, uh, when running the ball and I, I laugh because it's so true. Uh, you say you have to, uh, you say you have to block, you have to block the mic and move A-gap.
Mm-hmm.
And if you don't do that, it's pretty much the, the play is done.
Absolutely.
I think that's what's gonna be, um, the biggest, uh, the biggest problem we gonna face this week is moving A-gap and, well, I, I really think we gonna have to block Aaron Donald.
Yeah.
If we can block him and keep everybody else where they're supposed to be, it, we'll be alright. But blocking that guy is gonna be pretty tough and, uh, if we can do that, we got it, we got a great chance to beat them because I really believe that we have the personnel on defense to match up with any team that's in the playoffs.
Yeah.
And that's, that's something a lot of teams don't have, from, from cornerbacks to safeties to linebackers to defensive front. Every team don't have talent at every level.
Mm-hmm.
On defense like that.
Luckily, it's a lot of things we can do to, uh, to get Donald up out the paint. Um, they got two three techs that can play pretty well, uh, Donald and Sue.
Oh, yeah, I forgot, I forgot they got Sue too. Yeah, I almost forgot they got Sue too. So it's gonna be, I don't think it's gonna be a headache, but I think it's gonna be, it's gonna be a pretty tough task, uh...
It's something, it's something that you gotta look out for. I'll say this though. Clearly and Dom, uh, clearly, uh, Aaron Donald is the best, uh, interior defensive lineman in the game, but I will, but I will say, we've run across guys like Fletcher Cox, that's great practice for him. You know what I'm saying? We've run across guys like Grady Jarrett. Um, you know what I'm saying? Like, 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 it's, it's, it's not like this is the first, you know, nasty three tech that, that, uh, that we gotta deal with now.
Yeah, but, well, let me say this, uh, sorry if I interrupt you.
No, you're good.
I think Aaron Donald is just a bit above Fletcher Cox because you can line, you pretty much can put him in and on the D-line.
Absolutely.
He gonna have to sit no matter where he is.
Absolutely.
You can't, you can't move Fletcher Cox like you can Aaron Donald. So, I mean, it's, it's, that's what makes it kind of hard for teams to kind of game plan on him and...
Yeah. Um, that's kind of what we want them to do though. You know? We don't want Aaron Donald all up and down that, 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 that D-line. If, if we can keep Aaron Donald in one spot, it'll actually be better for us. Let me explain. You know, if you put him at, you know, both ends, three tag on one side, one tag on da-da-da, mo, 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 then you're gonna have to account for him on every single play. But if he lines up over, over Connor every time, then we have a mismatch elsewhere. Then we have like Layel on Dante Fowler or something, you know what I mean? Then we have Zach on, on, on Sue or something, you know what I mean? I'm fine with that.
Right.
I'm good to go. What I don't want is Aaron Donald having this clash of the Titans fight with Zack Martin every play and, 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 and Damon Dominic and Sue being the one that's having to play against Connor Williams. You know what I'm saying? That's kind of a plus two for them, you know what I mean? So I'm gonna watch a lot of Rams film to kind of see what they do up front and figure them out or whatnot, but I don't fear, I don't fear the Rams defense as a whole, you know?
Yeah, me, me neither. Me neither. That's why I say we block those two, uh, those two guys.
Yeah.
We should be, because their defense is similar to ours, but it, we're just a more ferocious and more violent.
Sure.
And I say that because Tlaib and Peters, they're not press man cover, uh, cover corners. They're more, uh, they play better off coverage than they do in press man. So that, that's what I think Dak is gonna see the whole game. I don't think he'll get, uh, press coverage the whole game.
Yeah, yeah, we'll see. You know what, uh, what I, what I'll probably do after this? Um, I'll probably pull some Rams film and just, um, kind of just let it play live on the channel or whatever, you know, just to kind of give people, uh, give people a free look at them, you know? So if, you know, if y'all wanna just look at the Rams and see what they do, uh, cause this is what I was gonna be doing anyway. I was, I was, I was gonna be looking at the Rams and kind of figuring out. So I, so I, I'll probably do it live on the, on the, uh, thing or whatever. It won't be like an organized show or whatever, but if people just wanna come in and, and just see the film, I'll just, uh, I'll probably do that, do that a little bit later while I wait on this, um, on this playoff film to drop so I can drop those videos or whatever.
It's gonna be, I don't think it's gonna be a headache, but I think it's gonna be, it's gonna be a pretty tough task, uh...
It's something, it's something that you gotta look out for. I'll say this, though. Clearly, and Dom, uh, clearly, uh, Aaron Donald is the best, uh, interior defensive lineman in the game, but... I will, but I will say, we've run across guys like Fletcher Cox, that's great practice for him. You know what I'm saying? We've run across guys like Grady Jarrett. Um, you know what I'm saying? Like, 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 it's, it's, it's not like this is the first, you know, nasty three tech that, that, uh, that we gotta deal with. Now...
Yeah, but, well, let me say this, uh, sorry, I had to interrupt you.
No, no, you're good.
I think Aaron Donald is just a bit above Fletcher Cox because you can line, you pretty much can put him in and walk the D-line.
Absolutely.
He's gonna have to sit no matter where he is.
Absolutely.
You can't, you can't move Fletcher Cox like you can Aaron Donald. So, I mean, it's, it's, that's what makes it kinda hard for teams to kinda game plan on him.
Yeah. Um, that's kinda what we want them to do, though. You know? We don't want Aaron Donald all up and down that, 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 that D-line. If, if we can keep Aaron Donald in one spot, it'll actually be better for us. Let me explain. You know, if you put him at, you know, both ends, three tag on one side, one tag on da-da-da, mo-mo-mo, then you're gonna have to account for him on every single play. But if he lines up over, over Connor every time...
Right.
Then we have a mismatch elsewhere. Then we have like Layel on Dante Fowler or something, you know what I mean? Then we have Zach on, on, on Sue or something, you know what I mean? I'm fine with that.
Right.
I'm good to go. What I don't want is Aaron Donald having this clash of the Titans fight with Zack Martin every play. And, 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 and damn Endomik and Sue being the one that's having to play against Connor Williams. You know what I'm saying? That's kind of a plus two for them, you know what I mean? So, I'm gonna watch a lot of Rams film to kinda see what they do up front and figure him out or whatnot, but I don't fear... I don't fear the Rams defense as a whole, you know?
Yeah, me, me neither. Me neither. That's, that's why I say we block those two, uh, those two guys.
Yeah.
We should be, because their defense is similar to ours, but it, we're just a more ferocious and more violent.
Sure.
And I say that because Telleeve and Peters, they're not press man cover, uh, cover corners. They're more, uh, they play better off coverage than they do in press man, so...
Yeah.
That, that's what I think Dak is gonna see the whole game. I don't think he'll get, uh, press coverage the whole game.
Yeah, yeah. We'll see. You know what I, what I, what I'll probably do after this? Um, I'll probably pull some Rams film and just, um, kinda just let it play live on the channel or whatever, you know, just to kinda give people, uh, give people a free look at him, you know? So, if, you know, if y'all wanna just look at the Rams and see what they do. Uh, cause this is what I was gonna be doing anyway. I was, I was, I was gonna be looking at the Rams and kinda figuring out. So, I, so I, I, I'll probably do it live on the, on the, uh, thing or whatever. It won't be like an organized show or whatever, but if people just wanna come in and, and just see the film, I'll just, uh, I'll probably do that, do that a little bit later while I wait on this, um, on this playoff film to drop, so I can drop those videos or whatever, but, um... I don't fear the Rams, man. Ever since Cooper Cup got hurt, Jared Goff been looking like a scrub. I stand by it. And, um, if we can, if, if, if we can deal with Aaron Donald, I don't fear they linebackers or their secondary, so line up. Say something.
Me either. I, I don't either. I, I definitely don't. I don't fear, this is just those, those two linemen, that, that's pretty much it, uh...
This is how top tier Vash Lombardi is. I want everybody to go back to Amari Cooper's rookie year. Um, he actually came out with, with, uh, Marcus, Marcus Peters, actually. I want y'all... Yes, yes, sir. I actually want y'all to go watch, uh, that first Oakland, uh, Oakland-Kansas City game. And watch Amari Cooper's route running smoke the shit out of Marcus Peters.
I did, I did, I did go back, I did go back and watch that, but, uh, yeah, I did go back and watch that, uh, you did do that, fam. I remember you doing, doing that. And he, uh, he, he torched them pretty good.
So, 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 everybody kinda keep that in mind when we, uh, when we are doing this moving forward. Um, man, you know, we got a hundred eighty-five people watching, man. I'll probably go ahead and do this in a little bit. Let me go ahead and set that up, man.
You know what's funny though?
What's up, bro?
I was just on NFL, listening to NFL Network and all that. Old Shay Sharp, he, he's just a hater to his heart, man.
Who?
He, he's a hater to his heart.
That's TV, man. Quit watching TV.
Yeah, he's, he's...
Quit watching those guys, man. Uh, hold on, let me, let me, uh, let me think of a title for this live stream. Let's go, um, watching, no, 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 let's go, live film. L.A. Rams. Study. Stop it, stop it. Study session, I don't know, whatever, whatever. Study session. Hmm. Yeah, yeah, that sounds fun. We'll do that, we'll do that. So, yeah, once I, um, once I get through some of these phone calls, I'm going to, uh, put some of this Rams, uh, this Rams film on the screen and we'll just kinda, you know, just kinda take a look at it. Like, it won't be a, like a formal breakdown or nothing, but you know...
How long is it gonna be before you start streaming, so I know, uh, tune on in?
I'm about to do it right now. About to set it up while you're on the phone right now. We gonna do this right now.
Ok- okay.
Yep. Take it easy, bro.
Alright, man, you too.
Yep. And we gonna get David Alexander on the phone while I put this out on the Twitter machine. Mister Alexander, what's crackalackin', brother? How that water taste over there?
Still, still sweet as wine, boy. I'll tell you that right now.
That's what I'm talking about.
Tell you that right now.
Consistent water. The water's consistent.
I was looking forward to playing them Saints, but eh, the Rams will do. We'll just run through them two.
Yeah. Either way, either way, we'll, uh, we'll, uh, we'll, uh, cross whatever road that we run into when we get there. How you doing, my good sir?
Yeah, I'm doing pretty good. I sat here and watched that Philly, uh, Bears game. I was like, man, I shouldn't even been watching that. I, I, I don't even know why I was even caring watching it, to tell you the truth, but...
Yeah, 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 kinda, uh, kinda hurt my head looking at it too, man, but, uh...
Yeah.
But, you know, whatever, we gotta, you know, we gotta do it.
Yeah, I can't wait for you to start rolling that tape on, on, on them Rams. Sooner the be- sooner the better.
Yeah, um, you, you know, it was, uh, it was just kind of a, kind of an impromptu thing, just kinda, uh, you know, just kinda thought of it right fast. So, uh, yeah, we probably gonna, um, I'm going, I'm, I'm pulling up my game pass right now, see if I can find some film and, um, figure out what, what, what games Gurley is playing in. And, uh, you know, we'll just kinda do it live or whatever. It like, it won't be nothing formal, you know, it won't be, you know, pretty and edited. It'll be long and boring, but if people wanna, you know, get idea of what the Rams do, you know?
Although, yeah, well, I'll be watching it. Make sure you check your, your PayPal.
Man, thank you so much.
You gotta pay them bills, bruh.
Thank you so much for everything you've been doing, Mister Alexander, man. You, 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 you are clutch. You one of the legends round here and, um...
Gold jacket.
I'm trying to work hard for y'all, man. You know, y'all, 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 y'all dropping these donations, PayPal, Super Chats, is making me work hard up in here, man. So, we gonna drop a lot of film this week, man. Plenty of work I'm putting in for y'all.
Right, right. I'm gonna let you get your next caller there, bro, if you got another one.
Yes, sir, appreciate it.
Let me let you off this line. Gonna make me a sandwich, bruh? Hungry?
Kick up your feet, take it easy.
Uh, out.
Yep, yep. So, I'm gonna shut down the phones, y'all. We gonna, we gonna shut down the phones and we're going to do this thing live. So, yeah, man, if y'all, uh, if y'all wanna kick up y'all feet real fast, man, if y'all wanna go grab you some, some potato chips or something like that, we gonna go ahead and do this. I'm gonna grab me some, uh, grab me some, uh, cucumber water. I'm gonna change this thumbnail and I'm gonna put it out on all the social medias and that's what we gonna do. We gonna watch some damn Rams. Let me see what the chat box talking about. We gonna get this going. USA Today, boom, boom, boom. Boom. Uh... Pat's in the chat box, what's good with you? Twine has called in, um, two shows. He called in, um, excuse me, he called in the reaction show and he called in the morning after joint. Antoine from, uh, from Memphis, uh, Ken, Kent Twine from Memphis. He, uh, he called in twice. That dude's a great call, man. He's a great call. Let's see, let's see. Alright, we gonna change the thumbnail. There that goes and we're gonna go to the game pass. This was a great idea, man. This was a great idea. Now, this probably would be a little, little boring for some of y'all, cause it's not edited, it's long form or whatever, but we'll get it done. We'll get it done. Let me, um, let me do this and I'll be right back. Okay. Alright, we back at it, we back at it. Uh, I don't, I don't really need, I don't need no headphones. I don't need that. Nobody's calling in. So, this is what we gonna do. I have a couple game logs pulled up just to kinda get an idea of the stats. I definitely wanna take a look at the Seahawks game. I wanna look at the Bears and how they shut Gurley down, basically, the Bears and Philly. Uh, we'll get a couple of those games in. You know, it ain't gotta be nothing too, too crazy. Um, so, let's go... Film and... Show windows or empty names, film and Google Chrome. Okay, I gotta maximize it, okay. Um, there we go. So, now, go to OBS. Boom, okay. Boom, let me close out some of this stuff. Alright, that's gone. Chat box, tell me if y'all can see, tell me if y'all can see that and if you can still hear me. Let me know. Let me know before we move on. And I'm gonna open up there and I'm going to pop out the chat box so I can see what y'all are talking about. Cause I still wanna keep tabs on y'all and what y'all saying. Pop out the chat, boom. Tell me if y'all have a good visual there. Tell me if y'all see it. Ew. As I take a sip of cucumber water. Alright. Y'all good? Okay. Um, so, yeah, like I was saying, so we're gonna start week... It's like fifteen or something? Week fourteen. Fourteen, fourteen, fourteen. And the Rams play the Chicago Bears. Um, the, you know, the, 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 the Bears have a pretty similar setup on, on defense how we do, as we do, right? So, of course, it'll, it'll make a little bit of sense to kinda see how they attack Todd. Gurley, let me open up my phone so I go back to my game log. Todd had eleven carries for twenty-eight yards versus the Bears, so... That'll be one of those kinda games that we would need, you know what I mean? Boy, whose scoreboard is this? Boy, they scoreboard look like it's in somebody high school gym, man. What in tarnation is going on with these people's scoreboard? Damn, I got jokes, okay. Um, so, yeah, we'll just hit that move right there. Uh, move that image out the way, slideshow. Alright, cool, 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 cool. We, we gonna keep the PayPal and Patreon up there, though. We gonna keep that up there. We gonna keep it up there for safekeeping, you know what I mean? Alright, let's take a look at, uh... Screen is a little too big and it's cut off a little on the sides, okay? I'll fix that. No, it's cool, it's cool, it's cool, the screen good, screen good to go. Yeah, screen, screen good to go. Yeah, and if we had to further adjust it, then, uh, we'll just cross that road whenever we get there. Yeah, we good to go. But man, they need a new scoreboard. They make too much damn money to keep doing that, man. Get that mess out of here. Alright, y'all, let's get it going. Let's get this thing going, if I can find, wait a minute, fuck. Uh, I need y'all to bear with me, man. A lot of this stuff was on the fly. This was on the fly. I ain't, I ain't think to, I ain't think I was gonna be doing this when I rolled out of bed. I was relaxing. Alright, let's get it going. This is good to go. Um, play. Let's go ahead and get started here. This is the, it's the Bears on offense. Let me just go ahead and slow that down a little bit. Good, I, get a good idea of this. Um, let's go to cartel view. Immediately, I wanna go to cartel view, see what's going on here first. Cause the only dude I'm really concerned about is Aaron Donald. And we see Aaron Donald is playing over the guard there. That's Connor Williams right there. That's Connor Williams right there. And, uh, who was that, Endomik and Sue? Yeah, and Endomik and Sue is playing one tag. Now, granted, Endomik and Sue is not a great one tag. He can play it, uh, but he's not the best at it. He's, uh, he's much better at, um, he's much better at three tag, but I mean, you can't play two, two, three tags. You'll just run up the middle. That'll be unfair. They're standing up Dante Fowler, which is interesting. Who is this guy here that they got in this three-point stance over this red tackle here? I'll, I'll, uh, pull their roster up and take a look at him, see what's going on. Number ninety, is that? I don't know who number ninety is. Chat box, tell me who number ninety is. So, what they're gonna do is, uh, they got ninety at defensive end, then they got these two, uh, these two walk-up linebackers out here. Those are probably gonna be defensive end type guys too, but the two bigs are in the middle, so... One, two... So, this is basically, basically a four-three look, basically. I know Fifty kinda sorta got his hand in the dirt there, but, um, we're not treating him as a, as an end. We're treating him as a, um, as a linebacker, so this is really like a four-three under look. Okay, now let's, uh, let's go back a little bit, see what their DB is looking like. Standard, standard two-high stuff, okay, cool, let's run it. And every play ain't gonna be long and drawn out like that. I just really wanted to, that's Brockers, okay, cool. Uh, every play won't be long and, and, uh, and, and drawn out like that. I just wanna be, you know, I just wanna figure out where, uh, where, uh, guys are. So, it is what it is. Oh, Brockers is ninety-three? Okay, cool. I don't know their numbers, I don't follow them like that. I'm Cowboys guy. Aaron Donald already kicking people ass. Boy, oh, this might be a Sewell Philo game. Oh, this might be a Sewell Philo game. Look, when you playing against Bobby Wagner, right? You kinda want somebody that's a little athletic that can get up field. I'll take Connor Williams. Man, 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 you, 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 you probably want Sewell Philo this game, bro. If both guys gonna get their ass whooped, at least Sewell Philo will get his ass whooped longer than Connor will. God damn. Let's look at Aaron Donald right here again. Aaron Donald was just reading the play there, uh, there, so, that's cool. I think as long as, uh, as, as Aaron Donald is reading, I don't, I don't think he'll, he'll, he'll blow us up in the run game. I think that's, that's good to go. Uh, as far as passing, like a pass rush, good luck. Screen here, they all over the screen. Easy peasy. They all over this damn screen. They ain't even have a choice. Who is this, uh, twenty-six fella's in the box right here? I need to get a, get a list of their roster. Let me, let me, let me pull their roster up on my phone. So I can have a better idea of who these guys are. I wanna see why twenty-six was in the box. Is that, uh, is that Mark Barron? L.A. Rams roster. Let me Google that. Now, this is a few times I've, I've seen, um, I've seen short passes that are expected to be, uh, to be Yak plays or whatever, so we gonna keep watching. I don't know if they, if they think the Rams secondary trash and can't tackle, I don't know, but I see a lot of dumping off here. But, but hey, that's what we do. That's what we do. My wife, Nene Russell's in the chat box. What's up, mama? That's interesting. Let me get straight to cartel view here. Let me get straight to cartel view here. Let me get straight to cartel view here. No ones, right, what's his down and distance here? What's, what's the, what's the down and distance, what's this, uh... Damn, this scoreboard trash, dawg, this is third and eleven? Yeah, third and eleven, so, ay, on these passing downs? Expect that two-three look, not two-three, but the two-three techs? Let me go back and slow it down for you. Two-three techs, two, uh, two, two, two pass rushes outside or whatever, LB edge linebackers, whatever you wanna call them, uh, they gonna leave the inside middle, so... They shouldn't do this against us. First of all, Money Mitch can run, but Dak can run too, right? So you typically don't want to leave the middle of the pocket open, you wanna keep, uh, you wanna keep one of those guys in there. If the Bears decide to run a, to run a draw right here up A-gap, that'll probably go for eleven yards, you know, uh, if, if it's blocked correctly. Jordan Howard would meet, uh, number twenty in the middle of the, in the middle of the Bears logo or whatever for, for, for a Mortal Kombat battle, but... Interesting, two threes on third now, remember it. And sure enough, Mitch got his ass outta there. Mitch got his ass outta there, so look, I ain't making this up, man. You can't be giving space like that. Uh, ninety-three is fighting over two A-gap and they're blitzing fifty-eight and B-gap, and that ain't the smartest thing in the world, but whatever way he feels. Yeah, man, that's... Dak could, Dak could probably use his legs a lot in this game. If, if, if that's how they gonna attack us third down, then Dak probably gonna use a lotta... Gonna use a lotta that stuff. Well, let me go back, I saw something in the chat box that, 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 uh, caught my interest, let me go back and see. Uh... If I was a center, I would identify this as a dime look. Uh, if we're gonna be throwing to one side, then seventy-two, boom, boom. These three guys account for these three guys, and, yeah, so the only linebacker here that we, that we, that we're really worried about is fifty-eight. And twenty-three would be accounted for as a safety or, or a DB, if you look at the leverage, you know, to where number, number seventeen is, that's who his guy would be. So, uh, yeah, this is just a typical dime look, man, consider fifty, ninety-three, ninety, fifty-six, consider those guys like just down lineman. I know they standing up, but consider them downlinemen, and fifty-eight would, would, would be, uh, the mic in this scenario, he's just kinda skated over. I guess to, to shade Howard or whatever, but, uh, ignore twenty-three, he's just, he's just down taking up space. But yeah, that's all I would say there, uh, let's get back into this though. Let's keep this thing moving. I wonder who they got on the other side of Marcus Peters, let me see what that's like. Shouts out to Anthony Miller. Who's this ninety-four cat, let me pick up my goddamn... Pick up my, my roster, I got their roster in front of me, we ready to go. If I just sort this thing by number, there we go. Boy, they got a lot of kids I ain't never heard of. Uh, who is, who is Tanzel Smart, I don't know him. They ain't really got a whole bunch of guys, but whatever. What happened on this play while I'm up here looking at the roster and shit? Yeah, little bit of pressure, yeah, we gonna have to get the ball out this week. We gonna have to get the ball out this week, there's plenty ways to nullify a pass rush, holding on to it ain't one of them. Interception right there by Marcus Peters. Let's go back and see what Marcus Peters did, let's go back and see how, 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 how Marcus Peters got this interception here. Marcus Peters is the cornerback up top. What do you do, they playing cover three, just a base low cover three? Yeah, Mitch just kinda threw that thing up there, so, yeah, okay, cool. Take that every day of the week. Boy, that's a lot of last name on that jersey, bro. Damn, fifty-eight. Yeah, Mitch just, yeah, he just tried him, man, ball was too high, so, yeah, whatever. But it's interesting that they got Marcus Peters playing cover three, he's not really a zone cover guy, Marcus Peters more so of a, he's more so a, a physical, a physical cover two player. I mean, a physical, uh, man, man player. It's interesting to me. Oh, well, let's see, let's see what they do here on offense, man, let me, uh, take a look at their offensive line here. Oh, 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 they, they snapping the ball quick, your bitch ass, don't do that, look at how fast they snapping the ball, man, wait, go back. Look at how fast they snapping the ball, man, I don't like that. Wait a minute. I don't like that shit, man. Hell nah, great block by seventy-six, though. Seventy-six, he left guard pulling and hitting whoever the hell this is that ain't looking, you ain't gonna do that to D-Law, but damn! First play they runs the counter. Understood, what's the formation, let me go back and see the formation. Boy, that scoreboard is trash. Okay, yeah, they just gonna block trips, guys, okay, whatever. Water still tastes great over here, for all y'all Cowboys fans, water tastes so good over here. But, uh, the Bears did a, uh, did a great job of, uh, of, of containing Gurley, though. Great job containing Gurley. We gonna have to do some of that same stuff, it's the Brandon Cooks here. Simple Cooks just gonna, you know, run a little drag to come over the top, but they're there to tackle, though. I don't really have, um, a big concern about our defense versus, um, versus the Rams' offense, cause we, cause we, we, we play a, a very similar, similar style of football. We're gonna be fast, we're gonna, we're gonna, um... We gonna suffocate these hoes, you know what I mean? These hoes. Uh, KCJ, thanks for the dollar and the super chat, salute, salute, salute. Per shaded. Screens and draws against that rush, Vatch, even though we never run the draw with Zeke. Uh, third and long, we, we, uh, run the draw with Zeke, not a bunch, not a bunch, but, uh, but we do, we do sometimes. Man, let me see what the hell this was, let's go to cartel view and slow it down. God damn, we ain't, we ain't, we ain't, we ain't got no Khalil Max, man, I love D-Law and, and, and Randy, man, but we ain't got no Khalil Max, my dude. Yeah, and all this happened because they, they stopped Gurley, they stopped Gurley at first and ten, let me, let me go back to that first and ten. So I can get a better idea of what exactly they, they, uh, did up front, I just kinda skimmed past it a little bit, let me slow it down. Who got beat here? The down blocks? Down blocks wasn't enough? And the tight ends wasn't enough, yeah, so we can't let the tight ends block us here, man. Can't let tight ends block us, take a look at eighty-nine on your right side about to get smoked. About to get smoked on this block. Yeah, moving on, they gonna kick a field goal here, uh, let's get back into the Bears' offense, take a look at the Rams' defense, which is really what I'm most concerned about. Let's take a look at the coverage here. Cover three again. Cover three again. Ay, man, look, if them hoes wanna run cover three against us the whole game, that's Cooper all day. That's Cooper and Gallup all day. That's Jarwin, if you wanna, you know... You, you do not wanna run cover three against us, man, you, you can probably do some cover two stuff, uh, but not cover three, man, not cover three. Uh, Vatch, can you boot the Rams fan outta here? I mean, if they chilling, man, I don't care. If they chilling, whatever, let them fly, who cares? Cover three again? Cover, cover three? Go back, they, they don't run nothing but that, they, they don't run nothing but cover three? They, they don't run? Okay. Cover three again. Okay, we'll do cover three again, okay. Same cover three, do it again. Now look, I tell you what, this is something that may be a thing, right? That may be a thing. I don't even think Aaron Donald out there right now. Boy, boy, when Aaron Donald get tired and he ain't on the field, uh, that's when we put our foot on it, that's when we hit the gas. Now look, if there's a time you wanna run a no huddle, run that shit when Aaron Donald not on the goddamn field. Run it when Aaron Donald not on the field, cut that out, uh, I'm sure they want Donald on the field, and we don't want Donald on the field, so it is what it is. Um, show the Colts game, chump. Oh, he ain't talking about Vatch, okay, cool. I actually know this guy, I know this dude, uh, Ruiz, yeah, I've seen his name before, yeah, but, whatever. Is that cover three again? Let me go back. Okay, no, no, that's something different, let me see what this is. Uh, that's, that's kinda manny looking, yeah. That's just one eye. Yeah, no, it's not one eye, that's funny, that's funny looking, I don't know what that is. That's a strange look, bro. That's too deep for me. That's too NFL for me, fam. Let's see what they doing up front. Aaron Donald's back in that same, man, look, why, why Aaron Donald gotta be in this gap all the time where Connor Williams would be? Why, why he gotta be there every time? Every time? Damn! Uh, Ms. April, I'll explain coverages, actually, Ms. April, I actually have a video explaining different coverages. It's in one of my older videos, somebody, somebody, somebody do me if they find that link from Ms. April, the, uh, how to identify coverages. I actually, uh, put that link out. Yeah, I actually put that link out, it's, it's, uh, it's somewhere, I talked about cover zero, one, two-man, two-zone, three, four, six and five, so... If somebody would please be, be, be so helpful as to, uh, send Ms. April... That link, uh, to how to identify coverages, I, I would, I would be much appreciated. Damn, bro. Damn, hold on, y'all, wait a minute, uh, boom, boom. Here we go. Yeah, that was some wild shit, bro. Playing these guys deep, what's the down and distance here? Second and twenty-one, god damn, call the second and twenty-one? Twenty-one? Still got the big play downfield, though, was it a, was it a hole in the coverage? Clear the linebacker, good throw by Mitch, that's what that was, yeah. It is what it is, I mean... Yeah, so, I'm pretty confident that this is what they do on their long pass rushing downs or whatever, they just line up with two, uh, two threes. Two ends, these, both, both these ends could be standing up or whatever, um... They'll walk a safety down, they'll, they'll make it look like it's cluttered up in there, they, they'll, they'll make it look like it's a lot of stuff going on, but it's really not. It's really not, when right here, all Mitch had to do was, uh, throw it to, was this tight end right here? All the tight end had to do was, uh, clear this linebacker here, and the ball's right there to him, so... It looks like a lot's going on, but it's really not that, not that confusing, you just gotta know who gotta run past who, and you'll be good to go. Um, as far as the Rams go on defense, I'm not, I don't, I don't fear their defense as a whole, you know, they... They got two guys in the front seven that you have to account for, but... I don't fear those cats, man, as a whole. Now, we know they in man coverage right now, but it seems like they're treating Tariq Cohen as a, uh, as a receiver. And that's smart, but we don't, we don't have one of those situations, you know, Tariq, uh, Zeke, Zeke is cool as a receiver, but he ain't a receiver like Tariq Cohen is a receiver, so... It is what it is there. That'll like a four-one-six, yeah. Let me go back and look at this, what was that coverage here, what was, what was the absolute, absolute coverage? That was one high right there, I give him one high. Seems like they only wanna, 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 wanna play, uh, one high and three, and, um, three high. And sometimes, and sometimes the reason people do that is because their safety can't cover, their down safety can't cover, cause they always playing one guy down. So if they never go too high with us? This might be a Cooper game, you know, this could be, this could be a Cooper game. Uh, this look like a little too high right here, I don't think, I, I think I just saw they wasn't too high, right? No, no, yeah, he came down, yeah, so... Yeah, he was deep, but his ass ain't stayed deep. This is just, uh, chasing a run, I ain't mad at that. I ain't mad at guys chasing a run. Uh, Joyner, Lamarcus Joyner, he still play for them? Lamarcus Joyner? That'll beat the shit outta him. I ain't scared of him. That'll beat that ass, let me go back and take a look. Man, they don't be doing nothing in the damn secondary. Um, Jake Downey said, "I was, uh, I was a drunken ass last time, great work as usual," oh, we know. Oh, we know, we noticed. Man, these, these, these corners giving up a lot of space here, like it's second and ten, but look at how much space the DB's giving, man. Like they're, they're covering up the slot guy, that's Anthony Miller, they're covering him up, but look at all this damn space they got, man! That's crazy. Who is this, Devontae Riley, uh, start watching film on their worst game, Vatch, it's like a Rams fan pulling up that Colts ass whooping. Uh, every game matters, every game matters, I wanna see what happened to Todd Gurley in this game, then after this, I'm gonna go watch the Philly and see what happened to Todd Gurley in that game, you know, so... Why I don't wanna watch the good games, I mean, so, you go, you go to the good games to, to, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm pretty sure that in the good games, they execute it. I'm sure, we know what they do, you know what I'm saying, I don't have to watch the film to be able to tell you what they do. They open shit up with Brandon Cooks, they run the ball with Todd Gurley, they throw the ball to Todd Gurley, i- if everything executes, it's easy peasy. I wanna know what them cats did wrong, that's what I wanna know. We know what they do right, we been knowing what they do right. Show me the bullshit. But hey, we'll see. We'll see, and plus, another reason I'm showing this game is because, I mean, shit, if you look at the Bears' defense, we look like them. We look like them, let me, let me, let me, let me pause it while, while I explain this, I mean, we could look at the Colts' game, but the Colts don't look like us. The Bears look just like us, so if, so, so don't say, Vatch, don't show the bad game versus the Bears. Damn it, the Bears probably did something that we can do to make them have a bad game, that makes sense, right? Don't that make sense? Chat box, don't that make sense? Come on, David Alexander says, "Donald concerns, uh, concerns me some, I ain't sweating Sue the food." You know, um, that's fair, Su, uh, and, and Ndamukong Sioux is a big, strong dude, but, uh... Aaron, Aaron's quick in there, and I think that's the difference, I think, uh, I think Sue is a little more imposing, but, um... Sue, Sue, shit, when I say imposing, I mean, as his own character profile, Sue is imposing, but he's not quick. Donald is also imposing, however, he's a lot more quick than Sue, so yes, I feel, I feel what you're saying, David, uh, Dave Alexander. I wouldn't call Sue slow, but damn, Donald quick, that's, that's basically what I will say there. Vatch, you think it'll be better for Connor to start or Sewell Philo to start, I don't trust Connor's little behind. See, Connor ain't little, but Sewell Philo just huge, but, um, I'm normally on Connor Williams' team, I'm normally pro Connor, um... We needed to block Bobby Wagner this week versus Seahawks, you know what I'm saying? So of course I was pro Connor there. I don't really fear none of these linebackers for the, uh, for the Rams, so, I don't know, this may be a Sue Philo game, who knows? Who knows, so, it's some, it's something to say, it's, it's something to, it's something to consider. Something to think about. We'll cross that road when we get there. So I don't think they line up on any strengths, I, I, I just think, um, Aaron Donald is always three tech on this side. And Sue is always the one tech on that side, normally guys line up, line up to the offensive strength. Like the tight end is on the defense's right right now. I wanna see if the tight end is on the, the defense's left, would Donald go to the left side and line up at three tech right there? And Sue go to the right side and line up at one tech, that's what I wanna know. But it seems like Donald is always on the right, on the defensive right, and that frustrates the hell out of me. The hell out of me. And you know, Casey, they, they may categorize this as a, as a three-four, but I see this as a center. And if I was a center, I would, um, I would just call this, uh, 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 a four-three. That's what I would call it, I would identify it as a four-three, but, whatever. We got a sack in the backfield, let's see what happens here, let's see what happened on it. Big ass sack, too. Ten yard ass sack, too, let's see what happened. Donald got double-teamed, I don't care about nobody else, Aaron Donald got double-teamed. Which is fine with me. Okay, so let me stop then, so that's what I was saying at first, right? If they put a tight end on the other side, then the, then the offensive, um. The offensive strength changes, so. So Donald lines up on whatever side the, the, um, tight end lines up on, he's not a, he's not an exclusive right side player. Donald lines up on the strength side, so if they have a tight end on the defensive left. Then Donald's gonna line up in the B gap on the defensive left, so Cowboys. Boy, you want Blake Jordan on the right side all day, boy. Boy, you want Blake Jordan on the right side, because Aaron Donald get to go up against Zach Martin, if Blake Jordan is on the right side. That what you want? Boy, Blake Jordan don't need to see Tyron Smith's side, we need Blake Jordan on Leo's side all day. That's just my thoughts, let's keep this thing going. Let's keep this thing going. God damn right tackle, what the? The hell you do? Hell, you doing right tackle? Left guard dealt with Sue, Sue is not a great pass rusher, and Dominic Sue is not a great pa- I think he's a name at this point, man. Like, he's a great player, don't get me wrong, but you remember how Grady Jarrett was a great player, but he wasn't nasty enough to tear shit up by himself? I think that's Dominic Sue now, I think the game has changed to, to, to quicker, uh. You know, quicker, uh, 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 tackles, you know, guys that are a little bit faster in there. And Dominic Sue kinda got drafted in the, everybody's gonna run the ball era of, of the, um. Of the league or whatever, you know, Sue ain't really your pass rusher, bro, Sue can get sacks, but he's not a pass rusher, Aaron Donald is your pass rusher. So on passing downs, I want Aaron Donald on the other side with Leo Collins, so Aaron Donald will have to deal with Zach Martin. Now. If that's the strong side that we throw to that side, then Dak will be able to see any, any pressure or whatever. Um, and Connor Williams or Sue Philo can get help from Joe Looney backside, so, um. Zach, um, Zach Martin versus Aaron Donald. Whoever's playing left guard and Joe Looney versus, uh, and Dominic Sue, I'll take that. I'll take that every day of the week. So, we'll see what happens here. We'll see what happens here. Let's see what happens to, to Todd Gurley here, Todd Gurley ran for nine yards here, I mean, take this Todd Gurley run out, let me see what's going on here. We'll go straight to the cartel view, we know this is a run play, let's see what happens. Jared Goff up there talking to himself, with his goofy ass. Yep, two things you gotta do all day, man, you gotta deal with A gap, you gotta block the mic. They did both those things well here. Now y'all run, I don't be making this up. David Alexander dropped a deuce in the super chat, he says Sue is a relic. A relic. Don't be like that. Don't be like that. Brian Ortiz says, last time Tyron played somebody athletic, he got killed. I feel like Tyron has dealt with Dante Fowler before, and I feel like Tyron beat the shit out of him. I could be wrong. Yeah, Tyron Smith beat the shit out of Dante Fowler, that ain't, yeah. Ain't nothing to deal with, let's take a look at this, uh, this pass protection, let me, let me see what y'all guys look like up front, man. I know the right guard got beat a bunch in the first half, in the first, uh, first couple series. Look at him again, looking lost, out of position, look at your right guard here. Out of position. Getting real, real close to the center, not really putting himself in great position, uh, to kick and get out on, uh, ninety-four, is that Leonard Floyd? Fam, you ain't trying to block Leonard Floyd like that. We'll keep eyes on that moving forward, what about the left side, what about, uh, your left and right ta- your left and right guard? Your left guard and left tackle, they cool over there, cool. Let's see, Todd Gurley, right tackle, uh, run for two yards, let's see what happens. I wanna see why Gurley got shut down, and it seem like nobody wants to block up front. So if they can't block us up front, they can't run with Gurley, easy peasy. Bears gonna line up with two twos, I'm with that. Boy, that right guard again getting slung around out there. Check your boy sixty-six out. Getting slung around out there, now granted, that's the best player in the league, but I mean, we got a guy that's pretty good, too, we, 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 we got some guys pretty good over there. On our team, what about their center? What's he doing? Cody White here. Left guard, left tackle. Left guard kinda getting pushed around, but whatever. They run more zones than anything, yeah, that's true. I don't see them do a lot of power stuff, but. I don't think Gurley necessarily fit that very well, so. I feel you on that, let me check this design out real fast, hold on. This look kinda funky. I don't like funky looking stuff. Got a tight end pulling backside, interesting, play action to Gurley, Gurley's gonna chip. Run to the flats, but there's a guy in the flats waiting on Gurley. What was Goff's first read here? Damn, Goff only looking at one side of the field, man. He didn't even look to the other side, let me check cartel view. To confirm that. Can we line our DTs up in both A gaps? Nah, nah, that's something I saw the Colts do, I'm not really, not really a fan of it, but, um. Well, some, something that we do is we line up, um, both our DTs on one side, so we got three players on one side, open A, A and B gap on the other side with a. With a, uh, defensive end there. That was interesting. David Alexander, uh, Dallas Cowboys, Dallas, hold on. Dallas D gotta beat the Rams offense off the ball so they can tee off on Goff and Gurley, true. True shit, let me see what happened to Gurley here. Did they block the A gap or the mic? Let's see what happened. Antoine Woods is a real big deal in this game, man, a big, big deal in this game, I'm glad he's healthy. Okay, well, it's two things you gotta do, man, you gotta deal with A gap and you gotta block, and you gotta block the mic, man, they didn't deal with A gap pretty well. A gap guy didn't make the tackle, but he damn sure blew this shit up, the guy that's over sixty-six that we been calling out the whole time here. Sixty-six been getting his ass whooped all day. All day. If we gonna attack somebody, put hands on that right guard, man. Put hands on that right guard if we gonna put hands on anybody. Somebody gonna say, hey, man, the Rams D-line pretty good, likewise. Now, this pass rush look like, or is that Jared Goff just? Just kinda trash here. Let's take a look and see. Damn, left tackle kinda got taken on the ride here. Damn, left tackle. Let me go to the right guard who I've been picking on the whole time, let's see what he did. He did pretty fine there, he finally sat down and extended. This goofy ass, pretty good set by him, what about the right tackle? Yeah, not bad, dealing with Leonard Floyd. Um, if I were y'all, I would watch Leonard Floyd, I would watch how the, how the Bears deal with Leonard Floyd. Because we got a guy in Randy Gregory that's just like Leonard Floyd, just as athletic as Leonard Floyd. So y'all keep eyes on that. Alright, it's the end of the first quarter, okay, cool. Cool, 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 we gonna speed this up a bit. I know I'm stopping and talking for the sake of y'all, but I wanna see if I can just talk through this thing. Y'all keep up a little bit, let's see. Money Mitch gonna pass this thing short to Taylor Gabriel. Marcus Peter, look, that, 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 and you know. If they just gonna run cover three all day and just give us space. Now, I don't think they're gonna play us, I don't think the, the, the Rams secondary is gonna play us in the same way. That they're playing the Rams, but. It'll be similar, we're, we're similar teams, though. We're similar teams. If you look at their guys and look at our guys. We're pretty similar, I mean, they got, they got a gadget guy, we ain't necessarily got a gadget guy. Uh, we, we really got more nuanced route runners, but you don't wanna give nuanced route runners this much space. They, they, they deal more with explosion. Taylor Gabriel can get downfield, Anthony Miller can get, he's more of a nuanced route runner, but he can't get downfield if you ask him to. Allen Robinson, he's, he's, he's as true of an X as they can get, but. What's up with all this space that they giving guys, man, they can't give us all this space. They can't give us all this space, man. Yeah, and Money Mitch gotta give a better ball than that, that's crazy. You can probably get a, get a, get a few more yards if you can, um. You can probably get a, get a few more yards if you don't, um. If you get a better pass than that. Let me see what the D-line is doing. Donald is over the left guard, now, see, and I think it's just got, kinda gonna change up, see, because the tight end is on the offense's right. And Donald is lined up three tech on the left side, but. They still do have a, oh, they don't have a three tech, that's a tight end, okay. So, yeah, so I don't, I don't think, I don't think Donald moves with wherever the tight end moves or the offensive strength move. I just think Donald just kinda move wherever the hell they put him at. Understood. I had to figure that out, man, I was gonna lose sleep over that. Jake Downey, uh, how well does LA deal with blitzes and stunts, you know what I mean, we still watching, we'll see. I'm gonna watch this game, the Eagles game, and I don't know, some other game. Couple people asking me to show the Colts game, but I don't do what nobody tell me to do. I don't follow rules around here. Hell, y'all talking about? Oh, man, genuine say, what you think this is? Come on, my guy. Wait a minute, did the, did the, um, did the Rams play the Colts? San Francisco, Arizona, Philly, Chicago, Detroit, Kansas City? When the, when the hell did the Rams play the Colts? That's why I don't need to be reading the chat box, y'all know what the hell y'all talking about, when the hell the Rams play the Colts, man, come on now. You know, Tavon Austin probably have, um, probably have a pretty good game this week, versus the Rams. Now, I'm more so, um, if anything, I'm trying to keep Tavon. Uh, I'm trying to keep Tavon just, you know, kick, turn the punt, return it, but if, if he can give us any value running deep at receiver. I'm with that. I'm with that all day. Gurley been getting ate up, man, they not blocking these guys up front, somebody asked me, how, how, how did Gurley do? They can't block him up front, and, uh, and if, if, uh, if they can't block the, the, uh, great throw Mitch. Great drop, eighty. Um, if they can't block you up front, then they can't run with Gurley, they couldn't, they, they couldn't block the, uh, the Bears all night. They couldn't block the Bears all night, so if they couldn't block the Bears in the run game, they definitely couldn't get Gurley going. Uh, and it seems like you can deal with Aaron Donald, it's just that you can't throw the ball a hundred times a game. You know, now, if Dak gonna have like thirty pass attempts. I'm cool with that. Jeremiah with five in the super chat salute to you, sir. Um, we just can't have Dak throwing the ball all day. I'm cool with us running versus Aaron Donald, cause that's more so of a, just get your hat on Aaron Donald and let Zeke work. Let, like, let Zeke figure out where to go. I wonder is Aaron Donald a liability in the run game, we know he's a, he's a tenacious pass rusher, but we not gonna throw the ball fifty times. That's interesting. And basically, what I'm saying to y'all is how I talk to myself when I'm watching film, man, like, like when I'm watching film by myself, I talk to myself just like this. Aaron Donald really ain't made no plays in the run while I'm watching, Aaron Donald could just be a pass rush three tech. Let's keep watching. Let's look at Aaron Donald right here, I'm, listen, I'm gonna, uh, I'm gonna alert y'all when, um, when it's a pass in a run. There's a pass right here, let me, let me move on to another, let me go back to. To another Bears drive. This drive started first and nineteen, I can't have that, I can't have that, I can't have that. We know what we gonna do to Gurley, man, Gurley ain't really shocking us lately, I already got a good idea what they gonna do with Gurley. How about this, right, let's take a look at this. This is, uh, this is in the second quarter, first and ten, they about to run the ball with, with, uh, Tariq Cohen, let's find Aaron Donald. And see what he brings to the table here. Let's see if Aaron, let's, let's just watch Aaron Donald versus the run, cause if, if they can't stop us versus the run, good luck. Aaron's over the left guard right now. Not really affected by the run. I mean, Aaron, uh, Aaron didn't, didn't really affect the run, let's keep going, um, this is a pass, so, but we can watch this too, though. This is gonna be second and six. It's gonna be second and six, Mitch is gonna throw the ball to Trey Burton. Aaron Donald got scary right there, Aaron, got some pass rush on you right there now. It kinda make your ass itch a little bit, check out Aaron Donald at, uh, at his spot. Beat the shit out of sixty-eight, see, that's scary, that's what you don't want, see? Look at, look at Aaron Donald right there, and B gap, go back, ding. Um, check out Aaron Donald in the, uh, B gap on the left side right there, beating the shit out of sixty-eight, that ain't what you want. That ain't what you want. But let's look at Aaron Donald right here. Third and one, Jordan Howard's gonna run the ball. For three yards here, let's see what Aaron Donald was doing. They clearly convert here, spoiler alert, but let's look at what Aaron Donald was doing, Aaron's in his spot, he's in the, uh, three tech on the left side. Sixty-eight dealt with Aaron Donald as good as you can deal with Aaron Donald in a run play. Aaron Donald didn't get smoked. But Aaron Donald ain't the run stopping savior. I'm gonna keep eyes on that, man. Keep eyes on that. Oh, Nini out here regulating somebody. Nini out here putting hands on somebody. What'd he say, hey, y'all, what'd he say about Vatch? So I can talk shit to him while he listening, while he on timeout. Chat box, what'd he say about Vatch? With his goofy ass, cause I got jokes. I got jokes. I agree, Greg. I think watching a game like this is better than watching a game versus the, uh, the, uh, Chiefs because we're not gonna play, we're not gonna play like the Chiefs. We're gonna play more so like the Bears. Salute to you, Snipe. Dave Alexander says, uh, looks to me like if you work number sixty-six on the Rams, beat his ass all day. Crawford D-Law, Gregory, Gregory Stein can, uh, can feast. Yes, um, it look like the Rams, Rams O-line ain't perfect. Iculis says sixty-six is a backup. Well, is he gonna be playing? If sixty-six, if, if sixty-six gonna be playing, then he ain't a backup. Cause Joe Looney ain't a backup. Not no more. Neither is Connor Williams, really, so. So tell me who gonna be playing now? Iculis? Let us know who's, who's, uh, who's, uh, gonna be playing so we can, so we can know. Let's see what's going on here. Let's take a look at, uh, this first and ten here. Show you ride. Eighty percent is, eighty percent of Zeke's runs are on the right side, so, so it's gonna see a lot of. Is that accurate? Where you get that from? PFF? Is it really eighty percent? Or is that a guesstimation? I'll take a guesstimation. Let's see what's going on here. Let's see how the Rams block up front. Seventy-six, I almost got tenacious there. I feel you seventy-six. You tired of people playing with you? Trying to take your lunch money? I understand. Man, that dude Khalil Mack good, man. Boy, that dude Khalil Mack is good. Shout out, what up, Joe? Cola, cola. You know Randy Gregory plays a lot like Leonard Floyd does, man. Those are safe. People celebrating. Y'all see the people celebrating in the screen? Just all in the screen? They got a dude recording the game from in the stands. Come on, son. Let's see what happens here. Where'd the safety come from? Antoine Woods and Malik Collins, we need one of them games from you, man. What about the center sixty-five? Do he start? Is he a starter? Tell us about sixty-five. Rams fans. You know what? I'll tell you what, like, all, all my, all my Cowboys, uh, my Cowboys family, they kinda, you know, come in and watch film, you know, with me or whatnot. Isn't it interesting seeing the, the different kinda fans that come in and out of the, you know, come in and out of the film sessions every week? You know, we running the Philly fans, we running to, um, Colts fans strangely out of nowhere, a couple Tampa Bay guys. It's interesting, you know, the, 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 I would say, the guests that we have in here. Day in and day out. You know what I'm saying? That's interesting, man. Welcome, welcome Rams, Rams fans, man. I would say Seahawks fans have been, have been pretty, uh, pretty humble and chill for our Seahawks journey. I'll give them that, but, uh. God damn, man, people be attacking us. About you get so many trolls, but, uh, but also some real opposing fans that are sincere. Yeah, it's a lot of guys that really, uh, that really rock with me off the strength of, uh, draft season. They found me in draft season somewhere and, um, they've been holding it down for me since then, so salute to them. That's what I'm saying, Brian Ortiz, he's a Ram fan, but he's been here for like two years now, yeah, so. Salute to Brian. Draft season on the way, but we got playoff stuff to do, so no draft just yet. This was a big run by, uh, by Jordan Howard. Let's see how it was blocked up front. Let me slow this thing down just a bit. We gonna watch this series, then we gonna get into another game. We gonna get into the Eagles game. I just wanna see how this thing was, uh, how it was blocked up front. I don't even think Aaron's in the game right now. He may or may not be. Uh, let me see, let me see, let me see. Is that Aaron Donald right there? Is that him in the? Yes, okay, cool. That's Aaron Donald in, uh, in B-gap on the right side. He's on the, uh, the right B-gap. Offensive right B-gap. And man, we, they ran right at him. And they was able to block Aaron Donald, running right at him. I think there's something to say, I, I think you can run the ball on Aaron Donald. Let me go to the Philly film. Let me, let me, let me go, let me go watch Philly. I think if you run the ball to Aaron Donald, I think, I think he's good to go. I think you can deal with that cat if you run at him. I think Ndamukong Su is the harder guy to run at. Aaron Donald is the pass rusher that, 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 uh, that you don't wanna deal with. That's interesting. That's interesting, and that ain't just one play. The last couple plays been like that. Like, the, uh, the whole, that whole deal was like that. Rams, Lions don't look like us. I think Philly looks more like us. Let me open up my, my goddamn. Let me find out we can run the ball on Aaron Donald. Then play action our ass off. Let me find out. Hold on, hold on. Week fifteen? Let me check out week fifteen, man. Versus the Eagles. The Eagles look, look, you know, they, they look more like us than the Lions do. Let me, let me check on the Eagles, man. Not listening. God damn, go back. Back. Go back. Week fifteen. Matter of fact, let me go get some more, um, some more, uh, cucumber lime water. And we gonna go to Coach's film. We gonna get ready. Let me find out you can run the ball on Aaron Donald. Let me find out. You can run a damn football. I'm going on everybody damn show, talking about how you can run the ball. Right at Aaron Donald and make him make a decision. Let me find out. He don't find the ball well. I'm on your ass. Uh, hey, Vatch, uh, you hear Cowboys didn't miss a single tackle yesterday? That's amazing. That's amazing. Michael in the chat box, he's saying, don't test Donald. I, I don't think that's the way to, I think if you fear Donald, I think if you fear Donald, then that's when he beats you. You know what I'm saying? If you fear him. Run the ball at his ass. Now, pass blocking, that's different. That's different. Pass blocking is different. But, you know. Damn. Let me see what happened here. Hold on. This goddamn game pass, uh, player is so trash. Let me go back to it. Alright, here we go. Let me see what happened on this play when, when Gurley got his ass ate up. Want to take major ass bounce outside? I feel you on that. Can you lower the screen? Hold on. We go to OBS. We go to OBS for y'all. Uh, that's what we got. That's what it is, y'all. That's what it is. Yep, that's, that's all the screen. I can probably move that a little bit. That, that's what we got. Alright. This Todd Gurley run was for three yards. Let's take a look, see. Let's go back and look. Chat box, what they ain't do? Looks like the Rams running this zone. Look here. Two things you gotta do. What, what didn't they do? See the Eagles giving him a lot of space. That's interesting. That's interesting. Who's this eighty-three cat? Reynolds? Ain't shit. We gonna whip his ass. They, they, uh, they punt after this. Nick Foles gets the ball. Cover three? Yup, basically. Let me find out the, the Rams don't do shit but cover three, dog. Let me, let me find out the Rams. Let me find out the goddamn Rams don't run nothing but cover three. Let me find out. Uh, they just stack one side. Hey, the Cowboys do this all the time. They put three, uh, three, uh, three D-linemen on one side. One guy's either gonna slant or they gonna blitz that gap. Forty-three is your mic. They didn't block him. Johnson got smoked. Matter of fact, let me see where Aaron Donald was that play. They just ran the ball. Let me see where Aaron Donald was. Aaron, Aaron Donald's just one tech right here. And Aaron, no, that wasn't Aaron Donald. Okay, my bad. Blah, blah, the screen. Ah, blah, the screen. Let me find out. Is Aaron the, okay, he's in the long white sleeves, so where the hell he at? He's at the end? Okay, yeah, he, okay. He's in his spot. I'm sure. Okay, go. I apologize, y'all. He's in his B-gap. He's in his B-gap that he's always in. I apologize. I couldn't find him. Yeah. He smoked the hell out sixty-one, I ain't gonna lie. He ain't had to do him like that, but. Nevertheless. Man, that little short ass dude can just, he can just play, man. Man, he could just play. This him lined up over, uh, sixty-five? Yeah, he's on, he's on the right side now lined over, lined up over the right tackle. They put his ass all over the place. They sat down on his ass too. Look at seventy-nine. Look at, uh, yeah, look at, look, look at the right guard, seventy-nine dealing with Aaron Donald here. That's Zach Martin right there. That's Zach Martin right there. Goff could go oh for twenty and three picks and dudes will be talking about how Dak's trash. True. Ain't lying there. You ain't lying there. Dallas a seven-point underdog versus LA. I'm taking those points all day. Yeah, sounds like a good deal. Sounds like good points to take. I'll take them. Seven points? Sure. I'll take those seven. Man, you could block Aaron Donald, man. You just can't be out here fearing this guy, man. Just don't fear that dude. Man, I'll take seven points versus the Rams. Damn straight. Ooh, I'll take them seven points. Colts are nine and a half. That's crazy. That's goddamn. Who is this motherfucker? Who is this? It's Mark Barr knocking the shit out of people? Bruh, we can run block Aaron Donald, man. We can run block against Aaron Donald, bro. We can do it. Vatch, we, we, we played the Rams last year and played them well. Yeah? And who was that? Like, what, Chaz Green last year or something? Chaz Green could play, I know. No Connor Williams could play if Chaz Green could play. This Aaron Donald in his spot. Yeah, they pulled, tried to trap him. That shit ain't work. All I wanted in life is for Zeke to truck Donald? Nah, I'm trying to get that dub, man. He ain't got a truck. He ain't got a truck. He need to stay away from his ass. And win, 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 win. Jonathan Cooper was the left guard? Hey, Connor Williams better than Jonathan Cooper. Connor Williams is better than Jonathan Cooper. He gonna spike the ball. Get your bitch ass up, man. Y'all complain too much. These goddamn pro football players, man, all y'all do is complain about the referees, man. Uh-oh, Aaron got a play in the run game? Nope, that wasn't him, man. Nevermind. That wasn't Aaron Donald, nevermind. Is that Aaron Donald? No, that wasn't Aaron Donald. Aaron was on the right side. Aaron was the, yeah, he's lined up over sixty-five. Man, I'm about to go tweet this. You can run the ball at Aaron Donald. Dwight Davis says, ain't nobody afraid of Aaron Donald if you ask me. He ain't no threat. Now, you wait a goddamn minute, Dwight. Dwight, you wait a goddamn minute now. That's a bit much. That's a bit much now, Dwight. Let's not get carried away. You can't pull guards on Donald. He's too quick. I think you could pull guards on Donald. I think you can. I think you can. You just gotta pull it the right way. You, you can't, you can't pull incorrectly, but. Aaron Donald got smoked by the left tackle over there. Go back. That's Tyron Smith over there. Feel good about Aaron versus Tyron Smith. But Vatch, he getting double teamed every time, so. So, ask LSU about double teaming Quinn Williams. That shit ain't work. If damn Connor and, and, and Joe Looney gotta, gotta, if they gotta chip, uh, chip Aaron every time, then so be it. See, I'm not in this for style points. I'm in this for points, points. Boy, boy, boy. Aaron Donald gonna run his ass straight into Zach Martin and, and everybody just gonna fall down. Everybody in the stadium just gonna fall when they run into each other. LSU O-line is trash, though. To be fair, ours kinda been playing trash too, so. I don't want people to fear Aaron, Aaron Donald, though. Be concerned about him. Be aware of him, but don't fear him, you know? I don't think every single play, there should be a preventative measure in place to, 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 to be afraid of it. Like, let's not, you know, let's not do that. We can block Aaron Donald. He can be blocked. We just gotta get the job done. Donald could be a linebacker if he wants. False. No, he cannot. I hate how they gotta pan to the, to the jumbotron every time. If I go quiet on y'all, I'm taking notes and trying to figure shit out, so pardon me. This ain't really for y'all. This is really for me, but, um, hey, if y'all don't wanna be here while I'm doing this, then so be it. And, and look, know something I just thought about? They got sixty-six at right guard. I thought he wasn't starting. I thought he wasn't. And, and look, know something I just thought about, they got sixty-six at right guard, I thought he wasn't starting, I thought he wasn't playing, like, who, who? Let me look up the Rams injury report. Let me look up the Rams injury report. Rams, matter of fact, no, 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 I can do this, I can do this, I can go. I can go Rams are lads. I'm gonna look at the Rams depth chart. Is this showing up on OBS, okay, cool, y'all can see, we, we can look together. We can look together. And damn, sixty-six is in they starting lineup, look at number sixty-six at right guard. Man, I thought you said sixty-six wasn't starting, my guy. My guy. My guy. I thought you said sixty-six wasn't starting. He's right there. Austin Blythe. He start. Oh, we gonna kick his ass. Yo, Dave Alexander, sixty-six starting, man, we gonna smoke the shit out of him. Ah, we gonna smoke the shit out of sixty, hey, was I tripping? Did dude in the chat box not say sixty-six ain't starting? Did he not say that? It's right there. It's right there. Anyway. And what's the date on this, as of December twenty-ninth, yeah, that's, that's, yeah, that's within the week. Come on, my guy. Come on, my guy. Okay, so, let's take a look at this while we here, uh. Man, that's a funny name fam, Kaderel, Kaderel? Kaderel Hodge? It's interesting, uh, Robert Woods, Brandon Cooks, Josh Rome, Jojo Natsen, um, clearly Cooper Cup should be in the IR section, yeah. Cooper Cup is in the reserve, they got a lot of guys hurt, let's look at this, uh, Cooper Cup. The other receiver, Mike Thomas. Cam Peters and Michael Brown, Dominique, yeah. Okay. Andre, Willworth, Robert Sefo, those guys are cool, they're not like. I mean, they cool, they can be beat, but they are cool, um, John Sullivan, Austin Blythe, we gonna smoke his ass. We gonna smoke Blythe. Rob Haverstein. Whatever, Tyler Higbee, a tight end, Jared Goff, we'll smoke him. Todd Gurley, CJ Anderson's on the squad now, but I don't think we're gonna see him too much. Nothing to, um. Nothing to really worry you about there. Michael Brockers is ninety, he's going to be your starting left defensive end, and Dominic Sue is the nose, which is, ain't really where he play at. He fits there, but that ain't really where he, that ain't really where he plays. Aaron Donald's gonna be the three in the most, for the most part. Dante Fowler is your weak side pass rusher, basically, yeah. It's interesting how Michael Brockers is a defensive tackle everywhere else, but he plays. Technically defensive end in this game, which is basically defensive tackle everywhere else. Which is interesting. Uh, Marcus Peters, Akeeb Talib's down there, Marcus Droner. John, John, Marcus, yeah, okay. Alright. I ain't mad at it, uh. Uh, two days ago, Todd Gurley says knee feels better, but he's still not a hundred percent. He's probably gonna, gonna, gonna play anyway, you know what I'm saying, Gurley's gonna play anyway, you know, it's playoffs or whatever, but. Um, but he, but he does participate in a light practice, so. Alright, let's, uh, let's get back to the film, pardon me. God damn it, I know I switched to another screen, get your ass back on. Get your ass back on. Get your ass. Boy, if you don't get your. Why you looking like that, boy, if you don't spread your ass out. Alright, here we go. Hit that button, let's go back to the second quarter where we were. Let's go back to the second quarter, uh. Yes, let's go there. Damn, when does, um, Clemson and Alabama play, I gotta, I gotta cover that, I gotta watch film on that. Forgot all about that shit. Tomorrow?
Yeah.
I'll be good to go. I'll watch that. Jared Goff throws this inception, let's see. It seems like everybody's content with, um, with giving these guys space, just giving these guys, you know. So that's what I love about Nene, not, not only did she say eight, eight, eight tomorrow, but then she said, but it's seven, your time, that's what I love about Nene, dawg. She be looking out for me, man, Nene just make, she be making sure I'm straight, dawg, she got my back, man, that's my rib, that's my, that's my backbone, dawg, she got me, man. Rest of y'all motherfuckers had me thinking the game. It's seven eastern, got me at six o'clock looking for the game, ain't even on. I'm thinking it's blacked out in my area, yeah. Thank you so much, Nene. Thank you so much. Boy, Jared Goff be having time in the pocket still throwing bullshit. That's crazy. Let's talk about this pass then, Nick Foles, short pass to, uh, Alshon Jeffrey for seven yards. You know what, Nene is doing a, 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 a great job in my chat box regulating everything, keeping the trolls out of, everybody, please. Give Nene a hand, give her some applause, give her the hand clap emojis, whatever you gotta do, just show Nene some, some, some appreciation, please. Just clap it up in my chat box for Nene, please. Please. Thank you gentlemen very much. You can go back so I can see what Mark Barron's doing. Ah, okay. Okay, 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 they let him go, let him go. Man, we can block Aaron Donald, bro. We can deal with Aaron Donald, you know? So this is what I, what I have so far. As far as the Rams offense goes. I don't fear Jared Goff, it seem like teams, uh, teams are giving these, uh, these wide receivers a lot of space. I guess you don't wanna walk up and jam these guys, but I don't really have fear, fear in them in that way, I think the defensive staff will come up with something, you know, we, we got corners that can run. Um, so we'll cross that road whenever we get there, uh, Todd Gurley, you know, if, if they can't, if, if they can't block your front. Good luck, man, seems like if Antoine Woods has a, has a, has a pretty good game, then. You know, that'll pretty much nullify everything, we really want our linebackers to run free in this game. Um, their right guard seems to be their, their weakest link, number sixty-six, he seems to be a starter. Number sixty-six is starting, um. He seems to be one of the, uh, one of the weaker links on the offensive line, so if we can put hands on his goofy ass, we'll be good. Um, I know the left tackle can play, but, uh, I know Randy Gregory's athletic enough to, uh, to, uh, to, uh, deal with him, so let's see what happens there. You know, then of course the whole D law match, whatever, but. Uh, how we like to set things up is if we get Antoine Woods at the, uh, one tech on the right side and get Malik Collins one-on-one. Or Tyrone Crawford one-on-one with, uh, with, uh, sixty-six, you know, that may be a sack that we need in the game, we'll beat his ass on that. The Rams defense that we should be a lot more, uh, concerned about if anything, it seems like they, they run cover three every damn time. I, I, I saw it too high look, but it didn't stay that way, I saw, um, I saw, I saw it too high, but they always end up. Turning that, um, turning that, turning that, uh, the strong safety into a, into a robber type of guy, they, they like to play him down and keep one guy high. They normally have one free safety high at all times and, and, and they like to clog the middle. It looks like the middle's clogged up, but it's really, but it's really smoke and mirrors, man, clear the linebacker, you good to go. Because there, there's really not a, not a good reason to have a safety robbing. And to have Mark Barron, which is another safety at linebacker, you know what I'm saying, it doesn't really make sense in that way. And if his little ass gonna be, gonna be playing linebacker, it's gonna be imperative that you get a big body on him and bust his ass, so. We'll cross that road, uh, but if they're gonna, gonna play cover three, one high safety, uh, cover one, which is another look, uh, that has one high safety with the, you know. Corners playing man or whatever, then Amari Cooper should be able to bust ass. Blake Jordan, I mean, he could do Blake things or whatever, you know, he can do, do some things across the middle. But if they're gonna cover one, cover three us to death, then Amari Cooper's gonna have a big game and Gallup, Gallup is gonna have an opportunity deep. That's just a note that I have there, as far as running the football, man, uh, Aaron Donald is very, is very effective as pass rusher, I mostly fear him. As a pass rusher, but you can get, get a hat on him and let Zeke make a decision to get away from him, the, uh. The typical rule still applies, you, uh, deal with A gap and you, and you, uh, block the mic. Seems like Adama Kassou is gonna be the, uh, the A gap player for the majority of the time, seems like they got him at one tech, I know he don't wanna be there. They got him at one tech and Mark Barron is, uh, like the world linebacker, but the other cat, the other scrub that doesn't have a name, he's, he's gonna be the mic. If we can, if we can just do the, the. Standard rules, deal with A gap, block the mic linebacker, we should be able to run the ball. I have no fear of him, you know what I mean? I have no fear of him, that's just my scouting report. Just off a little bit, uh, that's my little bit of, that's my little bit of scouting, you know what I'm saying, of course, it's gonna be a lot more film that I do. That I don't necessarily show y'all, but, uh. That's basically what I got so far, man, I'll probably watch one more game and call this thing, uh, call this thing a rap. Now, all that being said, I mean, we still have to execute, you know, we still gotta line up and get this thing done. You know, I'm, 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 I'm giving all this, all these gems and knowledge, I mean, we still gotta line up and. And, you know, block Dante Fowler, you know, we still gotta deal with A gap and block the mic linebacker, we still gotta take advantage. Of, uh, whatever, 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 you know? So we'll see. Brandon Blankenship says scrub, Pro Bowler, Corey Littleton, yes, Corey Littleton is a goddamn scrub, just like Mark Barron's a scrub, just like Dante Fowler's a scrub. Your whole goddamn team is a scrub, it's his battle week, we ain't got time to be shaking hands with you. We ain't got chance, they ain't got time to be holding hands with you, your whole team is a scrub. Except Aaron Donald, he's not a scrub, he's pretty good, but everybody else is trash. Line up. Your goofy ass. That's how you gotta talk to him sometime, and I hate I gotta. I hate I gotta do that to people, man, but, eh. Hate I gotta do that to people, man. Six-six got whooped again, it's all good. We gonna take advantage of that one. That's Fletch Chicago, so I get it. I totally understand, man. Dante Fowler is decent, Dante Fowler is a scrub. Yeah, Nene, the whole team, the whole team is trash. Get him out of here. Let's see what's going on here, lot of space up the middle, y'all gonna do with that? Hey, man, that's, that's Fletch, that's different. That's Fletch. That's different, man, that's, that's, that's Fletch. To be honest with you. Be honest, you don't hate doing that to people at all. Yeah, you know, Brad, I really don't hate, you know what, it's, uh, let, let, let me say this, Brad. Playoff time is a very, very stressful time, in the regular season, I was pretty humble, I shut my mouth, I ain't say nothing, I just. Watched the film and I moved on, got on my life, man, but. Everything is stressful in playoff time, and I'm sitting up here trying to watch this film for my Cowboys people, just to give us an idea, and these Rams fans. Coming in here with they two copper, uh, with they two, with they two copper US currencies here. Putting in they little two cents, if they wanna run it, we can run it. But I don't wanna run it with these people, man. I don't wanna run it. How many yards do you think Zeke will get, that's a loaded question. That's loaded, man. That's a loaded question, to be fair though, if I could be flat out honest about the Rams for a minute, if I could be real for a minute. Ever since, ever since Cooper Cup left, man, the offense ain't, ain't really been looking different, they could be productive, they can score points, they can get yards, but they haven't been. The same level of nasty, uh, of nasty as, you know, that they were at the early part of the season, man, you know, that's just the guy. That, uh, that Jared Goff can just count on, you know one of those guys who can just get the ball to and just count on. You know what I'm saying, like, he ain't got that, you know what I mean, uh, Brandon Cooks, you know, he's been, he's been from team to team for a reason. You know, uh, Robert Woods can play though, Robert Woods is very underrated, but I don't think he's a world beater, but he can absolutely play though, we've, we've, we've played receivers better than that, better than him. But, um. Vatch, I'll donate. Do the floss? I don't know, I don't, I don't know what the floss is, bro. I don't have, I don't have any idea what the floss is, my, my guy, I don't. I'm old, man, I'm old, man, I, I don't know what that is. Let me get back into this, uh, back into this film, man, so I can focus. What up Cowboy Chris? Floss is a dance, laugh my ass off, we were trying to get Shango to do it, nah, I'm good, my guy. Which one is the floss, I, I, I've probably seen the dance, I just didn't know that it was called the floss, I, I don't know. I'm, I'm twenty-six, but I'm an old man, bro, I, I don't keep up with the. I don't keep up with the dances, bro. Lieutenant Dan, what's good, my guy, salute to you, dosky wosky. Just taking a look at the, at the La Rams. The La Rams, the, the Louisiana Rams, you know? Aaron Donald stood that boy up that time, let's go back. Wait a minute. Aaron Donald stood that boy up that time, man, check him out. Check out Aaron Donald over your left guard here. Still that boy haven't reached out, sure did. Sure did. But he ain't, he ain't been doing that the whole time though. Van Jalen, give us a summary on what you've seen so far in this film session, you ain't just hear me when I just did that long ass recap? Where you went? Where'd you go? Did you step away? Did you step away from the camera? Where was your antennas when I just dropped that long? That long ass filibuster about what I've been seeing so far? Oh, man, good night, Miss April. You have a good night. Had to get water, shit. Would you had to go to the well to get some water? Yeah, I had a long ass breakdown of it, you can, uh, you can rewind if you like. You can rewind if you like. Lieutenant Dan said he's scared of Alabama and Clemson. Lieutenant Dan is a Clemson guy, if y'all ain't know. Vice, do you think facing the Rams is better than facing the Saints? We'll smoke the shit out of both of them. That's just my opinion, though. That's just my opinion, though. Let me see something. Alright, still not here. Alright, cool. Alright, cool. We back. We back? I've seen all I need to see. We got this. Thanks, Vice. Sloop uh born in the game. For Life FL, I guess that's what that mean. For life, for life, for life, for life, for life. I like uh. Breathe like us against any team uh with this wave we riding. Yeah, I mean, you know, you know, matchups make fights, man. Matches make fights. What's up, C money? What's up, C money? Let's take a look at Aaron Donald right here. Versus the run again. Let's see, let's see what happens here. Seem like once it seem like once you block him in the run, he just kinda stopped doing what he doing, right? He's not really a ravenous guy like Khalil is, you know? Isn't that interesting? Isn't that something to think about? Ain't that special? Ain't that special? The Rams are, I mean, the Eagles are going to. Kick the field goal. They gonna kick it into the end zone. Okay, the Rams got, okay, gotcha. Rams got a ball back. Let's take a look. All the road teams won, but the Cowboys. Salute to the road team. Salute to the road teams. We about to have a home game, though. We we about to go to LA with all those Cowboys fans there. Sixty-six over to having a pretty good fight with Michael Bennett. I think if I had to attack anybody, I would attack Michael Bennett. That's just my thing. What's up, young Vice? Love you. Showed Mississippi in the house. Salute to you. Reporting in from Nashville, I am. Salute to you. Salute hometown. Salute hometown. Jared Goff pass left short to Brandon Cooks. Seem like Fletch Cox didn't wanna hit Jared Goff there. That's interesting. Jake Downey sounds like Patrice O'Neal. Ain't that better? I'm very much a student of the uh of the Black Phillip Jake Downey. And everybody won't know what I just said, but if you're a student of the Black Phillip, then you understand. So salute to you, Jake Downey. Who's the better matchup versus Austin Blake, Malik Collins or David Irving? That doesn't matter. It's you know, seem like everybody whoop his ass, but. I don't know if David Irving is, I I don't know if he's in good shape. I don't know if David Irving is in good is in good ball shape, but we know Malik Collins, you know? He's been he's been playing every week consistent, and when he gets his one on one blocks, he 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 puts hands on people, you know? You dealing with two cornerbacks that like to take chances. They like to try people and they both um they and they play cover three all damn day. A- Aqib Talib and Marcus Peters are man cover corners. But they ass play cover one all day. Strange to me. Strange shit. So let me say this first. Nene, how many people I got watching live on my um on my um situation here? Second, I wanna ask everybody, um do y'all feel like we good here? Like, have y'all seen enough? Or do y'all wanna watch like another game or so? Do y'all wanna watch one more game? This is impromptu. This is just kinda off the top of my head. We just decided to do it. Um if y'all wanna watch another game, I'll find another game for us to watch, but I think I got a good idea. I ain't gotta study the shit out of them, you know? I let the coaches who get paid big dollars to study. Damn, four-four to one? God damn! I let the coaches, I let the coaches who get paid big dollars study the shit out of them, but um. I think I got a good idea about what's going on here, man. I got a good idea. Chef say he good. Up a game, up a game, up a game, up a game. We showed the Rams our uh the we showed the the Bears game already. We showed the Bears game first. A lot of y'all came in late. That's all good. I ain't tripping. Alright, we'll watch another game. Let's go to the uh let's go to the game logs. See which game we can find. People saying Seahawks, yeah. Seahawks kinda play like us, but. I'm kidding. Seahawks play just like us. It's just different. Minnesota would be interesting to watch. They played Seattle twice, pardon me. And they swept their ass too. They scored thirty-something points on on them both times. They played in New Orleans, which was a shootout. I ain't trying to look at these shootout games. San Francisco. I'll take a look at that first Seattle game. Yeah, let's do that. Let's look at uh, no, no, no. Let's look at the second Seattle game. I like to keep it close. So that's eleven eleven. That's week ten. Let's go look at week ten. Let's go look at week ten, see what see what was going on here. We'll look at week ten, then we'll wrap we'll uh wrap this thing up. I need to. Take a look at my super chatters. Who the hell done super chatted me? A lot of people. Jake Downey, salute to you, sir. Uh Dave Alexander, you know you wanted the goats a couple of times. Um top shelf, you know? Uh KCJ donated a couple of times. Salute to you. Jake Downey, salute to you, sir. Uh KCJ again, David Alexander again. Y'all been holding it down. Thor. Ockerlund. Thor Ockerlund, salute to you, sir. Drop the dudes in the super chat and asleep gamer. Thank you very much for what y'all do for the uh for the uh. For the channel. Thank you very much. Four-fifty currently watching in my twang voice. Nene, you not funny. Nene, you not funny. Look at him, man. Let me get about four-fifty. Boy, Cooper called him out. He said, ah. He said, ah. I said, what? I I said, I said, what did Amari Cooper did? He said, Cooper go, ah. That's alright then. Cooper Cooper went, ah. We'll take that every day of the week. Uh Seahawks Rams, coaches film. Let's take a look at it. Let get it. Sue has not been productive as of late. Well, the game is evolving around Sue. He's getting older and he's playing out of position, so. That's probably what that is. But you know me. You know me. The kick wasn't blocked, it was missed. You know something crazy about Cody Parkey field goals, man? It's like Cody Parkey. It's like, I think he missed half his field goals this year off the upright. Like, them off, we need to go play horse somewhere, right? Which is crazy. Out of position. Yeah, they got Adama Kassoo playing a lot of one tech stuff. Adama Kassoo is very much so an under tackle, in my opinion. At least he at least when he was drafted. His initial profile, his he was a under tackle. That was his thing. He was a three tech guy. Um they got Adama Kassoo playing a lot of one tech stuff because they can't play. I mean, he can play two threes, but. They can't play. They can't play two threes, so they put Adama Kassoo at one tech a lot. Or they'll flip him on the other side, let you know, let Donald do it a little bit, but for the most part, Adama Kassoo plays uh plays one. And they let Brockers play the end, which is interesting, so. Read option is there, though. You take a look at uh take a look at Russ here. You gonna crash up top? Read option was available, but. Ooh, Aaron Donald fighting. Ooh, he fighting. And they still recording it. Ooh, wee. Is that DJ Fluka? His ass fighting every damn body. Will you get him out the game? I know this game happened already, but get his ass out the game. River Valley University, I am not um taking calls. No, 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 not I'm not taking calls. I did earlier, but this turned into a film session and I need to focus. Cause I'm taking notes. I'm taking notes. God damn, who is that Russian Russell right there? God damn. That's a linebacker? That's crazy. Then they hit Russell in the knees. Look at they dirty asses hitting Russell in the knees. That's just how they was raised, man. That's just how they was raised, man. Pete Carroll ain't shit, got these kids playing dirt. God damn, who the hell? What the? Ah, ah, what the hell? Let me go cartel view. And see this kid shake the shit out of Aaron Donald. Now, that's Tyler Lockett. So in our world, that's Tavon Austin. Very Tyler Lockett is our Tavon Austin, so. Interesting. Thanks for the extra film work, per usual. You already know Jake Downey trying to trying to feed the block, man, um. Y'all 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 really been holding it down, man, for the for the uh for the donations the past few days, man. I just wanted to put this thing out. Give y'all my thoughts and uh whenever the film drops. If the NFL alumni ever drop the film, then you know, we'll go from there. Man, Russ do that thing at the referee, dog. That's crazy. Let's take a look at Aaron Donald B gap right now. See what he doing. Can y'all see? Is it still good? I know I moved stuff around a little bit. Let me pause this. Let me go to OBS, see if y'all see if y'all can still see. Y'all can still see? Okay, my bad. Y'all good. Okay. Okay, yeah. Okay, yeah. Y'all good. Alright, let me go back. Listen, man, you can absolutely run the damn ball versus Aaron Donald, bro. He's a tenacious ass pass rusher, though, but you can absolutely run the ball versus Aaron Donald. Go tell your friends you could be the smartest Cowboy fan in the room. Go tell them. Now, that's not to say he won't get tackles for loss. He can get that from just purely beating the shit out of people, right? But man, he can be taken out of the run game, man. That exists. It exists. Aaron Donald is a pass rusher? Good luck. Great throw by Russ, though, man. Get his magical ass out the playoffs, cause I don't wanna see him no more. Boy, I don't wanna play Russell Wilson ass no more. And he ain't even the best quarterback in the playoffs. He just made me nervous. He just magical. You know how like how like how like Pat Mahomes just magical? He just do magical shit? Nah, my guy. Check out your boy Aaron Donald being held up by the right guard here, sixty-six. Check out sixty-six here. Kick, 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 boom. Aaron Donald F would be up and down. I noticed. That's that's kinda interesting. That's kinda that's kinda interesting. Do you keep extra blockers in versus the Rams uh strong pass rush? Nah. I don't. I don't. I just keep it gangsta. I keep it gangsta lineup and play. Line up and play him and see what happens. Short pass by Cooper Cup. Bobby Wagner. Yeah, okay, cool. Bobby Wagner is our is our Jalen Smith and Vander Esch or whatever. We got linebackers that can skate and move like like um like old boy. So that's cool. And it seems like the Seahawks didn't really give a give a good pass rush up front on that last play. On this play neither. The Seahawks didn't give a good pass rush. If you if Jared Goff is clean and he's able to get the ball off, then I guess, you know? I guess that's what you dealing with, right? But we gonna chase his ass, though. We gonna chase that ass all over the place. Rollouts? Yeah, that's us. That's Cowboys. But we ain't watching for you. Let me go back and see what this pass rush looked like right here. And he still connected the pass for seven yards. Hey, that's that's our link. That's who we gonna pick on. Take a look at six at your uh your right guard here. Take a look at sixty-six. If we gonna pick on anybody, we gonna pick on that guy. Y'all go ahead and get ready for it. Y'all know something I hate the most? I hate when I be saying shit and then like the pundits that get paid big dollars, they come out and say it the next day. Salute to my guy Brian Brothers, but I bet you he gonna say something about sixty-six being trash. If he does, somebody hop on Twitter and let me know Brian Brother says sixty-six is trash. That's my guy, though. That's my guy. River Valley University, I hate that you ain't taking phone calls. Well, I hate that you was late. Shit, we called in earlier. Uh David uh Dave Alexander called in early. We got his phone in. We got three calls in. Nene, how many phones we get in earlier before we decide to go to film? Nah, he angry that I ain't got the phones open. Well, I'm mad at you late. Uh best way to diffuse a strong pass rush? Strong pass block. Strong pass block. If we beat the Eagles three times, I want Drew Pearson to call into the stream. I can get that done, though. That's the difference. I can actually get Drew on my show. Drew's been on my show, actually. I had I had Drew on the Cowboys Experience livestream. I went up and asked him a question. I I went up and had a conversation with with uh with uh Drew Pearson and shook his hand on my livestream. I ain't asked him about this, though. Oh, y'all uh go back and find it. Go back and check it out. Oh, y'all uh, go back and find it. Go back and check it out. They dug what they got. They blocked the mic for a little bit. They get a little yards. I ain't mad at it. River Valley University says, everybody spam open the lines. Why you wanna talk to me so bad, man? Why the hell you wanna talk to me so bad, my guy? I ain't that cool. I ain't shit. Van Jalen hilarious. He says uh, he says rewind the stream when I was taking calls and then call in. That's funny. He wants to cry about the Bears? Yeah, I know. And y'all gonna run that same damn cover three, dog. That is crazy. Now, let me see if very, let me see if somebody got their, got their thinking cap on. Who run this defense right here? Who um, who played defense like this versus the Cowboys? Let me see who got their thinking cap on. Who did this versus Cowboys? I'ma leave it up there for a little bit while I look in the chat box. Y'all, y'all let me know. Y'all look at the screen, evaluate that defense and let me know. And let me know who uh, who played the uh, the Cowboys just like that. And I'll shout you out. Ali Suave, he said it first. The Giants did this, this, this same exact shit, man. They played that too deep. But it wasn't just regular ass too deep. They played that wide ass too deep when both guys on the numbers. You see the uh, he's technically the free, kind of sort of, but he's technically the strong. But it's even, he's over here. So yeah, see how the free, well, the, the, the left safety. See how he's on the numbers, then the safety's on the right. He's also on the numbers. There's a lot of space up the middle. If they ever, if they ever give us this look, then John will go, then Blake John will go, go bust this shit wide open. Know what I'm saying? If they go to the cover one, cover three look, you understand, right? Now, not to say that the, the Rams are, are gonna give us this look. I don't know what the Rams are gonna. I don't know what the Rams are gonna do to us necessarily, but um. Hey, too high, wide safeties. You know how we attack that, so. Y'all just keep that in your notepad. Just keep that in your notepad, please. Now, it's interesting, right? See where the safety's lined up at now? At first, the safety's lined up on the numbers. Now they're lining up close to the hashes. You see what I mean? So now they're, they're more so taking the seams away. You know what I'm saying? Keep eyes, keep, keep, just keep your eyes open on that. Keep, keep your eyes open. Check out twenty-seven. He's staggered and he got his eyes inside. He's moving up, so it's not a cover two look. Vash, how you know it wasn't a cover two look? Well, if you rewind to this point. You look at your safety on the, on the uh, top of the screen, he's more so square. Look at your safety on the bottom. He's staggered to the inside. He has more of an inside leverage. So, so I, I, I felt like he was gonna move up to get into a position, so that gave me an idea that, that, that this wasn't actually a too high look. And that's another way to figure out whether it's covered two or not. You know that if it's covered two, there's safety up top here? You know, if it's covered two, then he would only be responsible for the left side of field. But you see him kinda cheating in a little more because in this coverage, you know, he needs to be more so in the middle of the field. See him cheating right there? That's how you know. And it goes right back to cover three. Easy peasy, let me squeeze. Easy peasy, let me squeeze. Brian Ortiz says, that ain't no disguise. You're right, it's not a disguise. Wasn't a very good one. Even though your strong was kinda deep, then next thing you know his ass wasn't deep no more and your free kinda shaded over, so. I don't know what you consider a disguise, but a disguise for a little bit. Just came to the light. And if Vash can see it, I know that they can see it. I know, I know young Russell Wilson can see it. What happened on this play? Let's go back and see. Let's go back on, let me see what happened on this play. Hey man, two things you gotta do to run the zone effectively. Let's go to the car, to cartel view, see if they did it. You got A gap and you got the mic. Two things you gotta do. Run the zone effectively and they did both those things. Big run. I don't be making this shit up, man. I promise I don't be making this shit up. Michael, uh, Michael in the chat box like, who's your team? Like? Who you, who you rooting for? I see you in all the live streams and you even been in Cowboys live streams, but you ain't never. Pro Cowboy, Michael. Who, who the hell you go for? Mike be spicy in these comments, man. What the hell you going for? Raider Nation? Why the hell you here? Mike ain't got shit that was better to do. Mike ain't got nothing better to do. Mike, 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 Mike be tuning into my show to see how Coop doing. They long lost pen pals. Yo, Vash just checked in to see what Coop doing, just. Just wanted to see what he was working, you know, see, see how he was doing since he left, you know, how's the kids, you know? Just wanted to check on Coop, you know? Uh, he mad we took Coop, yeah. That's crazy, man. The goddamn, the goddamn Raiders gave up two guys. And both those guys respectively have gone to the playoffs. They're, they've taken their teams to the, to the, to the respective playoffs. That is so interesting. You could just keep Mac and he changed your defense. You keep Cooper and he changed your offense. And just put guys around him. Crazy. Crazy, 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 crazy. That's how good Vash's streams are he pulls from Raider Nation. Hilarious. Okay, I take it all back. Mike say he's just trying to learn the game. I can't hate on that, man. I gotta respect that. He say he just trying to learn again. I take back all mean shit I said. Even though he ain't gonna take back all the mean shit he said, I take back all the mean shit that uh, that I said about him. He said he just here to learn the game and I gotta respect that. I gotta respect that. I gotta, I, I, I can't, I can't do nothing but respect that, man. Gotta respect. But get your ass out here when we talking Cowboys though. Get your evil ass out of here. You the bad guy. Get your Ultron ass up out of here. Let's take a look at this Todd Gurley run, see what happens here. Am I wrong for thinking that in Dominic Sue? Not in Dominic Sue. Am I wrong for thinking that Aaron Donald really don't make noise in the run game? Am I wrong for thinking that? He just gonna watch. I, I, I'll play it again. I'll play it again just in case I was going too fast. Check out your boy Aaron Donald, man. No, this all, god damn, I hit the wrong button. Shit. Oh well, gone now. You going to jail now. Yeah, we missed it, fam. Oh well, my bad. But yeah, man, Aaron Donald just. Aaron Donald really get lost in those run plays, man. YNC Nation, quit being scared, man. Quit being scared, my guy. Man, they don't run nothing but cover three all damn day. That's all they run. It's cover three all damn day. We got Aaron Donald whipping some ass right here though. God damn. Woo, and that's right, what Connor Williams lined up too, boy. You want something to keep you up at night? Check out your boy Aaron Donald over your left guard here. Shit. Shit. Y'all wanna lose some more sleep? Check out Aaron Donald sacking Russell Wilson right here. If y'all wanna lose some more sleep. Check out your boy Aaron Donald about to sack the shit out of Russell Wilson right here, over the same left guard. Shit. Uh, D-Dod Jr. just got my ass whoop shirt. Hey man, do you like it? Is it dope? Is it top tier? Is it top tier, D-Dod Jr.? Tell me about your shirt, man. Uh, D-Dod says, uh, not, not, uh, not D-Dod. C O C Production says, Vash, can you explain the, the three linebacker positions? Really like five linebacker positions, but um. The most common ones in even fronts or three linebacker sets is uh, Will, Sam and Mike. Let me actually go in order. Sam, Mike and Will. Um, strong, middle, weak side. Typically, the Sam lines up on the strong side. So before every offensive play. The linebackers dictate what is called the offensive strength. Um, which is mostly where the most players are. Um, so if uh, if the tight end lines up on the right side. On the offenses, okay, let's just say it in like, in like defensive terms, right? If the tight end lines up on the defensive right, then that is the offensive strength. The offensive strength is on. The defense is left. You know what I'm saying? If, if, if that's where the tight end is. So we would make that declaration, strong left. So the strong side linebacker, which is the Sam, would most, he, he, he would go line up on that side. Then the Mike will line up among him, then the Will will line up among him. In that order, everybody lines up and cleans up the guy in front of him. The Sam takes on the, 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 the big jobs. He's to deal with blockers. He's to deal with. Um, pullers, tight ends, fullbacks. He's in the, he's in the big funk because the idea is that if, if the offense is running the ball to the right. Because the strength is to the right, then we're gonna have to put a big stout linebacker to the right. You know what I'm saying? That's why Damian Wilson is nothing like Shaquille and Vander Esch, you know, um. Damian Wilson is a, is a, is a, is a bigger, more stout body. So he's there first. So if you continue to move down, which is the Mike, Jalen cleans up what Damian Wilson starts. So if Damian Wilson takes on blockers, Jalen cleans up from there. Jalen being the middle, he's being the Mike. He's gonna be in, in the middle at all times. His key, everybody's keys are the same, but um. But if uh, if uh, Damian Wilson takes on a tight end or a puller or a fullback or a, a kicker or something like that. Then, um, then Jalen Smith will come in and clean that up. And Vander Esch or the Will sideline, bro, Shaquille, Vander Esch, Shaquille, uh, they're the same player. The Will linebacker cleans up what those two start. You know what I mean? So if the tight end goes and blocks Damian Wilson and then the fullback comes up and block Jalen Smith. Then in theory, the Will linebacker shouldn't be blocked by anybody. And they just go clean up every goddamn thing. That's why in our, in our system, the Will linebacker typically gets, gets the most plays because he runs free. And he basically, all he has to do is, is read keys and not really deal with blocks. That's why when Leighton Vander Esch came out, he was being evaluated as a Mike linebacker. I was like, nah, I don't see it, cause he doesn't deal with blocks very well. He has the size of a Sam linebacker, but he's not as physical. He doesn't deal with blocks very well. But something Vander Esch does really well is that he reads his keys and he reacts and he runs to the ball. That's the clear sign of, of a, of a, of a Will linebacker. Darius Leonard is a clear Will linebacker. Um, Shaquille is a clear Will linebacker. But if you look at like Alabama uh, uh linebacker, Rashawn Evans came out last year, right? He's not a Will linebacker. He's not a key reader. He's a thumper. He's a downhill guy. He's a big stout dude. So you want him as the Sam. You want him, uh, you want him first. You want him dealing with the shits. You know what I'm saying? It's just the letter S for strong. Yeah, 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 basically. Um, it's just, um. It's basically what you want that particular linebacker to deal with. So when we're evaluating linebackers, we go, okay, well, can they deal with trash? Can they read uh? Uh, how do, how do they read their keys? How do they clean things up? Are they nasty? Are they downhill? Are they physical? You know, you take those traits and then you go from there. Even though Vander Esch is six-five, two hundred and mad pounds, um. His body size identifies as somebody that can play any, 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 um, any linebacker spot. But um, but um, he doesn't deal with blockers, so that's why he's a Will. Jalen can do everything. That's why he's the Mike. You know, he's big enough to deal with blockers. He reads, you know, whatever, whatever. But, but he can also play well. And Damian Wilson. That's why Shaquille and, and, and Leighton Vander Esch can't play Sam. But on that same token, Damian Wilson isn't athletic enough to play Will. So I hope that answered your question. Yeah, Jalen be thumping his ass off. The problem is Jalen, you know, you don't wanna put Jalen at Sam, cause then who's gonna play Mike? Sean and Ja, Sean and Vandy ain't, ain't built to play Mike. They're, they're, they're Wills, so. Man, who is just tackling this man way out of bounds like this, man? That is crazy. That is crazy. He tackling this man by the ball, boy. That is crazy. Forty-eight can play Mike. Uh, Joe Thomas? Joe Thomas plays Sam. I mean, no, 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 no. Uh, Joe Thomas is uh, he plays Will. Uh, he can probably play a little bit of Mike, sure. Every time you explain something, you make it so easy to understand. Thank you, my dear. Thank you, my YouTube wife. How many people we got live? How many people heard me explain that shit live? Cause I know somebody gonna, gonna ask me to explain it again. It's a little mic. Aaron Donald about to sack Russell Wilson. Let me go straight to the cartel view. Let's go straight. Let's go straight to the cartel view. Ah, gap exchange. I ain't seen one of those in a while. Look at this twist on up front. And it seemed like sixty-five recognized it, right? Sixty-five noticed it, right? Hey, shit's happening. He just couldn't. Aaron just different. Aaron just different, man. Hey Vash, can you explain the difference between linebacker position? Hysterical. Hey, this Van Jalen kid in the chat box hilarious, man. I ain't gonna lie to you, man. This Van Jalen kid pretty funny. He's pretty funny. I acknowledge your jokes, sir. You, you've had about five, five good, five good jokes on the road, man. I, I, I appreciate you. Um, let's go here. Let's go cartel view. This is a. A Todd Gurley run, so. Okay, so cool. Let me go and uh, explain this right here, right? I'll go ahead and use this as an example. Let me go back to the wide view so I can. So I can see something real fast. I wish I could just zoom out and just kinda see what I wanna see. You know what I'm saying? That'd be dope. Damn, I wish I could just zoom out as I please. But I can't. Let's take a look at Todd Gurley, man, he's, he's, uh, he's, he's about to, he's about to make an eleven-yard run. Let's, uh, take a look at the one tech in the middle linebacker, one tech in the Mike. Let's see what happens here. Every time, man, look, man. Look, for the four-hundred-and-eighty-seven people watching, for the four-hundred-and-eighty-seven people watching, that's something else I've been saying too. Uh, and I've been saying that in most of my live, um, situations or whatever, man. When you, when you, when you, when you zone blocking, when you run the zone schemes, man, zone runs, it's two things you gotta do to run the zone effectively, man. You gotta deal with a gap. Block a gap, contain a gap, seal a gap, double team a gap. A gap, you cannot get penetration from directly in front of the center, right? And a gap is on the left and the right side of the center, right? So the only person a gap is this guy right here. This guy between the left guard and the center. You gotta block the Mike linebacker. The Mike is, Bobby Wagner right now. Clearly. Bobby Wagner's right there. Easy peasy. Look, if you block these two people, the one tech and Bobby Wagner, you, 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 you get a positive run every time. Nine times out of ten, it's not perfect, but the theory is brilliant. If you deal with the one tech and the Mike linebacker, this is easy. Easy. Come on, my guy. Come on, my guy. I ain't mad, man, but I just be right. Just, I just be right, man, like, come on. I think a very big advantage Dallas has is coaching. Shit, did I just, did I just write that, uh, Cowboys will call every play like the coach's job's on the line? I think the Cowboys have, uh, I think the Cowboys have a bad rap for having bad coaches. I think the Cowboys coaching staff is pretty damn good. People just be saying shit to be saying shit, but I don't, I don't think the Cowboys got bad coaches, man. I think we develop guys really well. I think we game plan well, we stick to it. Shit, man, we put guys in the right spots, man. Couple things we could do different. Okay, let me say this. If there's any Rams fans in the chat box, I'm not being funny. We can go back to trolling each other and being aggressive at, like, after this, right? Let me just ask a serious, dead-ass question. Um, do y'all think Sean McVay has, has, um, has, uh, clock management problems? Honestly, this ain't even me trolling, I'm just asking a dead-ass question. We can go right back to trolling after this, Rams fans. Do y'all think Sean McVay has a clock management problem? Cuz I one-hundred percent think Sean McVay has a clock management problem. That's just me from what I see. But y'all Rams fans, y'all, y'all probably know, y'all probably know a little more than me. Then y'all can go right back to trolling after, you know, and, and talking crazy and aggressive talk, but, I just think Sean McVay has a, um, clock management deal. I don't think so. Yeah, he does. He does get kinda strange with his time mouse and his clock management. Like towards the end of the, I've seen, um, it's a couple examples, man, but the one that really sticks out to me was like that Green Bay Packers game, man. Um, the Green Bay Packers game. I know Aaron Rodgers was gonna come back and do some strange shit, but some say, I, I, was it a fumble or something? I forgot. I forgot it was a fumble or some shit that, that actually saved the scenario to where Sean McVay didn't, didn't need it or whatever, but it, it happened like four times this season, like three or four times or something like that. But, um, but, um, I really did notice that. It, it's just my opinion, though, y'all, y'all can go back to trolling. But, um, y'all, y'all, y'all can go back to trolling, it's just. Yo, River Valley, you dropped two in the super chat salute to you, sir. If you drop eighteen more dollars in the super chat, I will open up the phone for you and I'll talk to you for five minutes. But you need to drop eighteen in the super chat and we'll do that. Eighteen in the super chat and we'll do it. I also received, uh, twenty in the PayPal from John Shoop. Salute to John Shoop. Let me, uh, Nene say River Valley relentless. Uh, he didn't have a message, so, uh, but I appreciate you, John Shoop, for dropping twenty in the PayPal. Uh, hey, man, we just working hard out here, man. We just working hard. Y'all wanted to see the film? I'm putting the film out for you. Uh, I'm only putting this out because I'm waiting on the playoff film to drop. Soon as I get, um, soon as I get the playoff film, I'm, I'm on you. Soon as I get the playoff film, we, we, we dropping that work for the streets cuz y'all need it. You need it. For nineteen ninety-nine, you can speak to law for five minutes. Y'all crazy. Y'all crazy. God damn, right guard, you almost got us killed. Everybody check your right guard out, I almost got us killed. Oh, okay, John Shoop in the chat box, I see you, John Shoop. Am, am I saying your name right, John Shoop? Appreciate it, Mr. Shoop, dropping twenty in the PayPal, that's very much appreciated. You know, Paypals are better than, um, than, um, than, uh, super chats, but Patreon is better than all that. So I, I appreciate every single form of support, man. It's keeping the lights on. Um, y'all know we out here grinding, we working, man. This is my, my, uh, my, uh, this is a, a full-time job for me, man. So I appreciate it, John Shoop. You putting on, you putting on for your, uh, for your, uh, community, man, I appreciate you. Call me now for your free psychic reading. Man, y'all funny. So, you know, we probably gonna go through like two more drives. One on offense, one on defense, I already got my mind made up. And, um, y'all can hit me with chat box questions and we'll get up out of here. Unless y'all wanna raise eighteen dollars to get River Valley on the phone, then we'll go from there. If we can get a, if we can get another collective eighteen for River Valley, we can, uh, we can, uh, get him on the phone and see what he talking about, man. I'ma subscribe to your Patreon, I low-key get excited about your film sessions. Hey, man, I try. I try to make them great, I try to make them informative. Um, I just try to get the information out, man. I try to get the information out. Can my five dollars a month go towards the River Valley fund? Sure thing. Sure thing. Van Jalen's gonna put five in the Patreon, so River Valley, if you, if you, uh, if you can come up with thirteen, I'll cut the phones on. I'll cut the phones on and I'll let you talk, sir. As a hurt Bears fan. As a hurt Bears fan, I'll let River Valley University come on and cry about the Bears. But we need to raise thirteen because we got five from my man's Van Jalen, so. Thirteen more donations, well, thirteen, a, a cumulative effort of thirteen that will get my man's on the phone. Sure, David, if you wanna get on the phone too, we'll open the phones up. We'll, we'll cut them on and leave them on. Sure, for five minutes. River Valley say he got five on it. Drop five in the PayPal or the Patreon, River Valley, and we'll, and we'll open these phone lines up. See, I've been working, I, I've been working a lot, you know what I'm saying? I did a, did a four-hour stream last night, three hours this morning, no, it was like two hours this morning. Watch your film here. It's goddamn telethon. Everybody donating to make it to twelve dollars, so Vash, and then Vash just end the stream. Ooh, that's funny. Ooh, that's funny. You're the first person I hear say McVay isn't a good coach, you just hating my dude? I ain't say he wasn't a good coach. Well, you probably wasn't even talking to me, you probably wasn't even talking to me. But, um, I was just talking about his clock management. Oh, that's a dollar from Greg. Twelve more. Twelve more, we open the phone. Yeah, man says goddamn telethon, y'all are hilarious. But, uh, I mean, cuz I'm still up here just watching this film, man. I'm up here enamored by the, by the few finds that I found. There's Aaron Donald again, getting blocked and, and I wouldn't say quitting, I don't wanna say quitting, but Aaron Donald just kinda getting blocked and just staying blocked. You know what I'm saying? He, he's just, he's just gotten blocked and he stayed blocked right here, right? Check out your boy Aaron Donald, man. He just blocking, he stayed blocked. And this all happens in the run game. I don't think Aaron Donald wants to, to, to deal with the run game. I don't think he wants to. Well, let me check the PayPal. Salute to River Valley, salute to Clarissa Vasquez. Never seen Clarissa Vasquez before. Welcome to the Vash Lombardi Show. We break down film here. We prove the peanut gallery wrong here. Um, we fight the narratives and we try to better educate those. Those that are lost. And David Alexander funded the phones. Also salute to, wait a minute. Wait, 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 wait. Wait, 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 wait. All right, cool, the goal has been reached. All right, let's get this phone on. So, uh, River Valley University, man, we about to cut this, uh, we about to cut this film off. And we about to let you be a, an irate Bears fan, and boy, you better let us have it. Oh, boy, you better let us have it. Let me, mute this thing first. So I'll let the, I'll let the film continue to run until, um, until I get everything set up. It won't take me long to set up, it'll take me like, like a minute, two minutes to set up. But boy, y'all really wanna hear this dude, uh, uh, be irate about the Bears, boy. Well, I, 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 I really hope he, uh, he, uh, gives us something, uh, I hope he gives us something interesting here, if we, uh, if we, uh, got the phone lines open for him. David Alexander's absolutely goat, man. David just like a good show. That's what I know is about, about David Alexander. David wants a good show, David wants good information. David ain't, David ain't got no peanut gallery in him. Jake Downey says he wanna lick the tears off his face. Oh, God. Ah, that's funny, man, this is crazy. Oh, man. Um, I do have a Cash App. Somebody asked about my Cash App, I saw it, but I lost it. Um, the Cash App is, uh, Dollar Sign King Lombardi. K-I-N-G-L-O-N-B-A-R-D-I. Nene, what does, what does, what does, what does Kumkani mean? What does Kumkani Lombardi mean, Nene? Let him know. Let him know, man. Let him know what Kumkani means. I don't have Venmo, this is the first time in my life ever hearing about Venmo. I didn't know Venmo existed. Didn't even know, didn't, didn't know Venmo existed. I don't know what it is. All right, let's, uh, let's get this going. FreeConferenceCall.com. River Valley say, thanks for the support, guys. Ah, you know, this was a hard time in his life, man. Oh, man. Let's see. Let's move some stuff around, let my computer load up. I tell you what, man, at some point, I'ma get some new, um, I'ma get some new hardware, this thing gonna be lit all over again. All over again. Raymond Garcia says cries in bear, that's hilarious. But yeah, uh, I guess I'll go through my scouting report again while this thing loads up and by the time I'm done with the scouting report, everything should be loaded. Um, the stream did not end, no, 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 no. Um, so Jared Goff doesn't react well to pressure. It seems like he can be pretty good if you can, uh, if you can put pressure on him. But to be fair, sometimes he even looks bad when there's no pressure on him, so. Um, I think he's really been affected by the injury of Cooper Cup. I think, um, I think that's, that's really, that's really taken a toll on him at some point, you know? Cooper Cup is that, uh, you know, every, every, every quarterback kinda needs that, that reliable guy. You know, just that, that go-to guy. Uh, Robert Woods has been cool as a, you know, as an initial character, but I, you know, I, 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 I don't, I don't necessarily think that Robert Woods is Cooper Cu, is, um, is Jared Goff's go-to guy. You know what I'm saying? Even though Woods is a reliable target, if Cup is there, I'll say that. If Cup is there, Robert Woods look, he, 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 uh, he looks a lot more elite. But Cup ain't there, so that's one thing that we gotta take into account for. Uh, as far as the Rams offensive line, sixty-six seems to be the weak link. And when I say weak link, I mean that mother is a weak link. Um, you know, we can really put him in some one-on-one situations, pick on him, uh, put hands on him and take his lunch money and things of that nature. Uh, I'm, I'm all about that. Um, as far as, we back. As far as the defense, yes, as far as the, uh, the, uh, defense goes, I mean, Marcus Peters and Tilly, uh, I mean, they're there. But it's interesting because both those guys are man-covered corners, in my opinion, and they play a lot of cover-three zone over there. Uh, which is strange, which is, which, which is really, really strange to me, but, um, it seems like the only way to take Amari Cooper out the game is to, is to, is to play too high deep. And I don't see them doing that. So if they're gonna try to take Cooper out the game, they were gonna run the ball, hit the seams, you know, work Blake Jarone, you know, things like that. But if they, um, if they continue to do their cover-three, cover-one look or whatever, then, um, then we'll just smoke that ass, um, with, uh, galloping Cooper. Pick your poison. I take that every day of the week, famo. They, uh, they, they don't have two safeties that can really cover. The free safety's fine, he can, he can, he can work with a little bit of space, but their strong safety, I don't really consider him, um, you know, like a, like a, like a rangy guy. I don't think, I don't think he's gonna get out and make no noise out, out in, um, out in open areas. So we see him as a robber a bunch and they really try to clog that middle up, which makes sense to why, which makes sense as to why, um, they play a lot of cover-one and cover-three. They just simply don't have the, the leg power or the speed or the range to get it done. Um, or the range to, uh, to get it done, uh, in a, in a, uh, cover-two scenario. So they just play cover-one and clog the middle and try to make it look like there's a lot of guys in the middle, but it's not a lot of guys in the middle.
Welcome, this service is provided by FreeConferenceCall.com. There is one host in this conference. The recording has started. All participants are muted and they can unmute themselves.
The phones are live, the number to call in is five-one-five-seven-three-nine-one-two-eight-five. The access code is three-zero-nine-one-zero-four. The information you need is on the screen, it is in the description, and I'm sure if you're extra, extra lost, somebody in the chat box will hold it down for your dosky woosky and your peasky whiskey, okay? Okay? All right? All right? Um, so yeah, this isn't exclusive to River Valley, but River Valley's probably gonna go first, plus he gets five minutes. So, um, that's a long time for a call, but, um, you know, River Valley wants to hold it down, man, so I'm gonna, um, okay, Terry sent me, uh, sent me twelve dollars in the, uh, in the Cash App for film session. Salute to Terry, dosky woosky, I appreciate it. Very, very much so, appreciate it. River Valley, what's your area code so I know who I'm, uh, who I'm, who I'm talking to here? Nevermind, River Valley, you're platinum. Actually, let me go to David Alexander first cuz he, he, he pretty much funded this. Mr. Alexander, thank you very much for, uh, funding, uh, River Valley to come in and, uh, cry about the Bears' loss today.
Yeah. That cat smoked me, man.
That cat smoked me, man. But tha- that's alright. That's alright. We got these lines open. He, he wanted to cry. It's, 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 it's the game. You don't hate the player, hate the game.
Yeah, it is what it is, but, but, uh, we, we.
That's all I gotta say. It is what it is, but, uh.
We gonna.
I think, uh, one, uh, there's one guy on there, Rattlesnake nineteen eighty-three, talking about the Rams only got one defender and that's Donald. Rest of them trash, so we pretty much smoked that, uh, secondary, so.
Let him have it, boss.
And, and, and I'm still down on Sue. I still think he's trash. Yeah, he's a, he, the fool's a dinosaur. He's a dinosaur.
Look, David, look, you called him a relic and I screamed, man. Oh, you called him a relic and I screamed.
He is, and the head st- head stomping fool, yeah. I know y'all remember that stuff, but when he, when he was with, with Miami, when he, when he stomped, I mean, when he stomped on, uh, Garode's head. And then, you know, Haynesworth was another one that, that stomped on him, so. Yeah, Sue just, he is, he's a dirty dog and. He just need to pack it in, so. That's, that's the way I call it, you know? I call it like I see it, man, you know?
I feel you, boss.
Ain't no bullshit in my game, you know what I'm saying?
I feel you, boss.
But, uh, I'm gonna let some other people get on this line, so, uh, I'll holler at you later on.
Yes, sir. River Valley got a smooth five minutes. And, you know, and if it's a good call, you know, we'll let him keep going, but we, 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 I mean, we got a five-minute clock game going, so let's get into it. Let's run it for the cardio.
This was our chance.
Oh, shit.
This is our year.
Let me go ahead and start your clock, bro.
All of this, huh?
Go ahead, go ahead. Nah, you got it. Do your thing. Go, go.
This all fell in our lap. At the beginning of the year, as a Chicago fan. As a fucking native. I pay taxes. We built the stadium, goddammit. We built the fucking team. And now. We got Khalil Mack following our lap. We get an offensive coach who fucking keeps our defensive coordinator, who's getting interviews for all type of motherfucking positions and shit. He's gonna be gone. This is our window. And it fell in our lap and we fumbled it with a crusty ass. No fucking right foot having ass kicker. All he can do is hit the fu- like, like this and one, like he playing horse or some shit. Nigga, this ain't horse, bruh. Get it in the middle. I don't need you hitting the goddamn upright. I don't need you getting left upright, I don't need you getting right upright, I don't need you getting the middle crossbar or doing a double crossbar middle hit. I don't need none of that.
But he made the first one, though. But he made the first kick. When they froze him.
Yeah, my grandma could've made the first kick too. She could've made both of the kicks. And my grandma got two double hip replacements.
My grandma can't kick.
And I'm tired of this shit. So I'm frustrated because this was our chance. This was our year. Our defensive coach is gone. Everybody wants him now. He took a team that was not expected to do crap. To do crap. We were not expecting to do crap. And now he, and now they wanna, what, what?
I miss my Uncle Charles, man. Damn.
Yeah, what'd they say on that Easy Bone video?
Uh, I don't know.
Uncle Charles would've been ashamed.
I, I'm, I'm just saying, man. But look, man.
Trubisky, no, 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 wait, wait. You didn't say that, cuz Trubisky played his lights out.
Yeah, Mitch played well.
He, yeah, well. Nigga threw for three hundred yards.
Yeah, he played well, yeah.
Three hundred, three hundred on them bad boys. He threw for it on his back. Nasty. Yeah, you can't be mad at that. And then we had, every time they kicked it to us, they was. They was scared as hell. And then Cohen took that one kickoff he really did get, and what'd he do? Put us right in position to score, yeah. And next thing you know, so we got advantage special teams, we got, we got the advantage offense, our defense got two turnovers. And then, on one play, the refs fucked us in the ass.
Damn, dawg.
So are you serious? Like, we should've won that game here on offense. I'm just pissed off there, like, damn. Bro, you can't, you, you, nigga, you don't do shit. You get paid, you get paid at least seven hundred K, Joe. You get at least seven hundred K, cuz what's the integral minimum contract? Five fifty?
Yeah, like five, yeah, like five something, yeah.
It's like five something, just to sit on the bench and ride the pine. Nigga, you can create seven hundred. Ride the pine.
Ride the pine, the pine, okay, the bench, got you.
Yeah, they didn't pay five fifty to ride the pine. This man getting paid seven hundred to kick a field goal. What type, what are you, what, what's the problem? That's, I, I, it got me so hurt, my ass like, wow, we, we should all be pitchforks out. I was looking for him after the game. I was looking for him. I wasn't ready. But security's so tight around the field that niggas can't get to him. I was ready for it. I would've been here. I would've been here for the, uh. The little you did, but I had to get back to the crib, you know what I'm saying? Get on my little laptopy and. You know what I'm saying? Don't many, we had to raise eighteen dollars, you know? Had to, we had to do, but hell no.
But, 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 but.
He ain't running around on Chicago streets like he fucking cool. Man, I bet a nigga catch parking on buses in the fucking head.
Why we gotta wish violence on that man, bro? Why, why?
Ain't no wishing viol- I, nobody wishing violence. People, we know the violence.
Why it gotta be like that, man? Why, why you just can't fire the guy? Why, why you gotta, why you gotta, why you gotta take his lunch money, man?
Cuz he makes more money than the people that pays for the team. That's why. We're paying you to do a job and you can't even do it? If I went to motherfucking Panera Bread tomorrow and they said, oh, you couldn't make a fucking ham sandwich, they'll fire me, right? I don't get eight, eight times to kick the fucking field goal, do I?
But you made, but you, but you made.
Fucking door.
But what if you made the ham sandwich right the first time? But they said, but, but they called a timeout and made you make it again? Like, come on, man, like you ma- but, but.
No, no, but I know your history, but I know your history is that you can't make the ham sandwich right consistently. Can you, Vach? You make it consistently.
I've never been to Panera Bread. I, I don't know what, I don't know what their sandwich is like.
Hey, well, that was my high school job, nigga. I worked at Panera Bread.
I've been to which, which?
Hey, hey, no, 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 we have the shorties coming here. Don't, don't, don't be like that.
I got you. Um, did you go to Panera Bread today? What's the best thing? What's the best thing they got at Panera Bread? I might go later.
Broccoli cheddar soup with a bread bowl.
I might go get a broccoli cheddar soup with a bread bowl.
Yeah, that shit fire.
Uh, so now what, man? Uh, you looking to the, uh, you looking forward to the draft? Who you wanna, who you wanna, uh?
Man, no, I, hey, no, we looking forward to the draft. You know what we gonna do? We gonna draft the fucking kicker. We gonna draft the kicker.
You gonna draft in the first round?
Yes, we draft Alabama's kicker.
You gonna, you gonna, you gonna, you gonna draft in the first round?
Or Georgia, or the Georgia with the dude with the goggles? Yeah.
But you gonna draft in the first round, though?
Yeah. Why not? We don't need nothing else.
Well, you can't draft him in the first round, cuz John Gruden got y'all first-round picks.
I don't, I don't care. What I'm saying is one of our first picks is gonna be a goddamn kicker. It's gonna be the kid from Georgia, Black and Ridge, whatever his fucking name is, Black and Bird. He's gonna be on our squad. And he's gonna be, nah, he gonna be laughing just like y'all see on TV, laughing and shit. Yeah, he gonna be just like you when he get that contract and he laughing and he sitting in the fucking condo overlooking Lake Michigan and shit, watching the Thatties run down the street.
Bruh, I, I, I ain't laughing.
On the running pass.
I, I, I ain't, I ain't laughing ten minutes, man. Come on now.
Nah, nah, I see you laughing.
Your TV behind, man. Man, your TV behind. I ain't laughing ten minutes, man.
No, my TV ain't that behind.
You lagging.
Hey, yo, I see you though. But no, he gonna be out there and we gonna get him and we gonna do that thing, cuz. Our coaches are smart enough to realize, yo, we lost. Because we had. Man, put that little thing down, whatever the fuck they're handing, little nice thing.
Man, yo, yo five minutes been gone, man. We already ever wrapped this up.
You already wrapped my shit up?
I done played, I done played Crossroads twice.
Man, y'all, y'all, cuz y'all hatin'. Cuz y'all understand that we know, and then at the same time with your god thing on bet, your, uh, little Dallas Cowboys? What y'all doing with your little Dallas Cowboys?
We're advancing to the second, we're advancing to the second round playoffs.
Man, y'all, ooh, y'all lucky. Y'all are the luckiest teams in the playoffs right now. And everybody knew it. We all watched the damn game. Dak Prescott looked like he's a fucking lost, fucking, uh, Boy Scout out there. Don't know what the hell to do. All he knows to say is, yeah, yeah, let's do this, let's do that. Yeah, 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 yeah. Man, get the hell out of here. Y'all already know that he's done. It's a rap. It's a rap. And if y'all sign him long-term, Cowboys is a rap.
But he won though.
But I don't think, I don't think, I don't think Jerry Jones is gonna do that. Man, man, we can all win. I, I.
Y'all ain't win. What you mean y'all can win? Y'all ain't win. You, you, you didn't win. That's the point of this. You didn't win today. But you didn't win today.
We lost by a kicker. And we lost by a kicker.
If, if Mitch would've threw another touchdown, if Mitch would've threw it, my team won.
The Dallas Cowboys, the Dallas Cowboys, the motherfucking ninety-five or whatever, six championships or whatever the hell they done had. No, this is not what's going on right now, sir. Y'all motherfuckers ain't never seen a championship in eighteen years, nigga. We ain't having that.
Jesse Jackson, let me ask you a question. When's the last time y'all won one, Jesse Jackson?
Gee, we was, we was in the Super Bowl in oh-eight, oh, oh-seven. We was in the Super Bowl. We was, when the last time y'all smelled a Super Bowl? When the last time you seen a Super Bowl?
Did you win it? Did you win it? Most importantly.
When the last time y'all seen, when the last time y'all seen one?
Let me ask you this. Are you going to win this year? Get your goof ass off the phone, what? Ooh, get your goof ass off the phone, what? That's how you gotta talk to them sometime. That's how you gotta talk to them. You gotta talk to them that way. Dave Alexander, you gotta talk to him that way sometimes.
You showed him.
You gotta talk to him like that.
This cat got me hollering, man.
You gotta talk to him like that sometimes.
When's the last time the Bears been to, yeah, it was, it was oh-eight and they got beat and they had that, that cat from, um, the, the quarterback from Washington.
Rex Grossman.
And they whooped that ass. The last Super Bowl they had is eighty-five. Come on, man. Did you get, come on, man. What's wrong with this cat, man? I, I bet you Dak Prescott probably gonna kick the better onside kick than. That shit.
Look, man.
This fucking got me hollering over here. Look on your face, man. This shit's fucking, that, that shit was priceless, man. Can I get a?
Man, what's wrong with him?
Break out that hatchet. Break out the hatchet on him. You gotta break the hatchet on him, bro. You gotta break the hatchet on him, man. That fool. That dude was killing me, man.
Do it again.
Hey, I was worth that thirteen dollars. This dude had me fucking hollering. Hey, you know what? You know, you, you, uh, you remember that movie, uh, Man on Fire, Denzel Washington had that? Had that drug dealer, uh, bent over the freaking, uh, uh, over his car? And he put that, uh, balloon up his, um, keister with that C four in it? And that cat asked him for, for a last wish and what Denzel tell him?
Yeah, what'd he say?
Tell him the same thing I'm telling the Bears. I wish you had more time.
I ain't know where he was going. I ain't know where he was going, but we good. We good to go.
This shit was worth it, man.
Oh, man.
You got me hollering in the Southwest, boy. That just gave my night, man.
Appreciate it, man.
Yeah, let me get off this phone, man.
Yes, sir.
Holler at you later, man.
Man, what, what are you talking about, man? Let's get, let's get Dez on the phone. What's up, Dez?
Brother man, what's happening, man?
Hey, man, what's wrong with your boy, man, calling in, talking crazy like that?
Man, look at, he was on that bullshit. Hey, that was funny, though. Hey, I think, um, I don't know about it being worth thirteen dollars, but I'm all for, uh, for the telethon calls that you had going on. It was hilarious.
Hey, man, you know, you know, trying to entertain, man, trying to keep this thing going, man. Trying to, trying to grow as a content creator, you know?
No doubt, man. You, you make it happen, bro. Actually, uh, we was listening to you on the way back. I just got back from Houston. I'm back in Louisiana. You know, um, so we got an interesting dynamic coming up as a Louisiana boy, you know, but a Dallas Cowboys fan. Uh, with bracket situation. I, I, I know what they say, don't look forward, but if we handle business next weekend, we gonna have to see the Saints. And the Saints handle business.
Sure.
Now, you know, let's do the dream bracket, you know? Cowboys handle business. Saints beating shit out the Eagles. I, you know, I would rather play the Eagles than the Saints, of course, but I, I'm tired of seeing Foles.
Sure.
I'm tired of seeing Foles. So, yeah, we see, then we see, um, Juve Reeves NFC Championship. That would be lovely.
You know, it's, uh, at this, at this point in the game, ain't no more easy matchups, you know? Ain't no more gimmies. Um, but. We in here with them, you know what I'm saying? We part of the same tournament. So everything that we worried about, they ass is worried about too. You know what I'm saying? So, um. Hey, man, the Rams, you know, we, uh, we, uh, got a game in LA. It's more, it's more Cowboys fans in LA than it is in, um. I mean, it's more Cowboys fans in LA than our Rams fans, they fans back in St. Louis. Um, good luck. Good luck to them. Good luck. But, uh, I'm, I'm, but I'm trying to show them, take care of business.
That's my, um, so here's my mindset. This was always my mindset, oh, game week. We have a little meeting, D-line play defensive line, so we in the D-line room, we checking, we doing, doing a scouting report. And it's, and a lot of people's thinking, so, uh, what about them? And I'm, I'm chill, I'm like, uh, you know, I'm not worried about them, cuz we do what we do. Everything is gonna do what it do. And that's kinda, that's kinda what I'm feeling about, uh, the Rams at this point. If, if Cowboys focus on being the Cowboys. Alright, do what we do well. What does it matter about the Rams?
True. True. You ain't told no lie. You ain't told no lie. You know, just as much as they worried about, you know, just as much as we're worried about they guys. Man, they worry about us too, man. We just gotta line up, do our thing. I think we the better team, honestly.
Yeah.
I think we the better team, you know?
And that's a, that's, I won't say it's an odd feeling. It's a, it's a refreshing feeling. Going into it thinking, damn, you know, I actually think we got more dog in us than them.
If you look at our defense, we got animals on every level of the defense. They really got Aaron Donald and Endomikusu. And Aaron Donald's way better than Endomikusu, but I still respect Endomikusu. I got a little respect for Marcus Peters, but I think he can be beat, you know what I'm saying? I think, I think our dogs on defense is better. If you look at the offense, I mean, they may be better on offense. But i- 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 they, they, they ain't smoking us. This ain't no outclassing, you know what I'm saying? Cuz, you know, you know, styles make fights, man. Styles make fights. While we, while we.
I'd say they're more explosive, our offense.
Sure, sure, but.
Yeah, I don't know. About better. I, well, I could say better. I got a few more options, but definitely more explosive. But I'd say, um, I, I like, uh, when we rolling, I like our offense against their offense, for sure.
Sure.
Um, oh, what about, I, I ain't, I don't know if I've heard many people give this. I think the O-line for the Cowboys are getting underpraised for their performance. Other than Connor Williams on a couple plays, um, this past weekend. I feel like Dak stayed clean, man. He was holding the ball a lot.
I would say, I would say that they, that they played well, um, I would say that they, that they, uh, played well this week, but.
Let me, let me, let me preface this with playing well, uh, pass pro, not necessarily run.
Okay, um, as soon as I get the film, I'm gonna let y'all know, but from outside looking in, it looked pretty good. It looked like the offensive line played, uh, played, uh, played, played, played a great game, but I definitely have more answers, uh, uh, coming up. Uh, salute to Kenneth Duncan, uh, dropping a deuce in the super chat. Um, I gotta see you though, uh, uh, Dez, I gotta watch a little bit.
Yeah, I, I'll say, I know how, you know, for you analyze it and, and get your inspector gadget on. I definitely think, uh, that they was kinda, the trenches, Zeke was being Zeke and making cuts where it happened. They was kinda kicking ass. They D-line, you know, on running situations. We kept doing that zone concept shit and, uh, we wasn't moving Agout. Agout was kicking it right there. And Zeke was having to be a monster. But as long as I ain't see Dak get sacked five times, it's all good. Next week, Rams. Do you think, wha- what's the biggest thing I bet you worried about next week? For our offense to get rolling?
Gotta run the ball, man. Gotta run the ball. Gotta, gotta run the ball and I would like for us to finish drives, you know? From here on out, from this game on out, I would like us to get better every week at finishing drives. Every week, every week, every week. I want us to get better at finishing, finishing, finishing. That's the only thing. I, I got the utmost confidence that our defense can play with anybody. Anybody. It's all about us, it's all about us putting points on the board and, and if we can hit our, hit our mark. Which is really twenty-four, in my opinion. If, 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 if we can, if, if we can make that the baseline. I feel comfortable about, about, about playing anybody moving forward. We just gotta finish better.
Okay, and, and look crazy, last thing, I'm gonna jump off this phone and unpack. What you think about, uh, this little fringe group of people that wanna trade for Nick Foles?
Alright, Dez, it was good talking to you, bro. Salute to you. Appreciate it, man, you know it was a good one, dawg, you know you welcome to call in.
Yes, indeed, take it easy, man.
Man, get out of here, who the hell asking you that, appreciate it, man.
Man, look, I, I, I got some crazy people in my ear, I said fringe group.
Man, close your ears, fam, we don't need all that shit, all right, bro?
So that's, that's what you feel about, close, uh, hey.
Yeah.
Take it easy, bro.
Yeah, yeah. Man, say, trade for Nick Foles, boy, that is, boy. Boy, Cowboys fans get wild these days, man, Cowboys fan, River, River Valley call back in, I don't know if I wanna ask him. Jake the Great, what's up, man?
Oh, what's happening, Voch, man, what's happening, man?
Doski Woski, my dude, welcome, welcome to the show.
Thank you, thank you, and man, before I get started, man, go on, go on, play that war song for the man with the hatchet, dawg.
Man, you already know, it ain't nothing but a click away, man, hit the quick time, ah, pick my hatchet up, mm, mm, what they talking about?
Yeah, yeah, man, I know what you're talking about, man.
Hell, they talking.
You understand, it's, it's a small victory, you understand, it's, it's a lot more game, man. I think, like, every Cowboy fan right now, we just gotta soak it in, you know, this is a blessing, you know, we so used to eight and eight, you know what I'm saying, missing the playoffs, I'm just blessed, you know, we in the division around, I ain't gonna lie, I almost gave up on Dak too, but it's funny, my homeboy's like, hey, man, oh, he needs a, a, a main receiver, man, Dez couldn't separate, just give him some time.
Yeah.
And sure enough, he's doing the thing, you know, I gotta give Jason Garrett props, you know, clap on to him, I'm gonna keep on clapping, you know what I'm saying? Every Cowboy fan, we just all just gotta shut up and watch the show, no more complaining about Dak doing this, or we needed to see this, and that, we here, we in the dance, you know what I'm saying, I, I, I believe we can do the thing, man, you know what I'm saying? You keep doing your thing, uh, Law Nation, books, you know what I'm saying, I have to fall back on, uh, Mark Holmes, cuz you, you know, you can little weird a little bit sometimes, but, you know what I'm saying? But, tell him, do, what, what do you think, what, what do you think is like the biggest surprise of the season, you know what I'm saying, besides like Amari Cooper and, and Hugh Kelly, what do you think is the biggest turnaround that we did, you know what I'm saying, from three and five, what do you think?
The biggest turnaround from three and five? Um, I like how, in my personal opinion, and, and, you know, people may, may think the opposite, though, but I think our defense has, has, has gotten better, uh, you know, week by week. I think when people find little, little cracks in the armor or whatever, I think we, we, we take that and adjust to it really well, you know what I'm saying? To where something to happen, something to happen, but when they do it, you don't see that shit no more, so.
Right, right.
So we went from being a pretty damn good defense to, man, we getting turnovers now, you know what I'm saying, to, man, you know, we, 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 we getting sacks and pressures when we need them, you know what I'm saying, like, when we, like, when we looking bad on, on offense, we can just count on those dudes, you know what I'm saying, we can just absolutely count on those dudes. And the more the season goes on, clearly, the, the, the teams get better, you know, it's the Rams now, you know, it'll probably be the Saints next week, then whoever's in the bowl or someone that we get there, the team's only, only, only gonna get better, and I, I'm not afraid of them, I have no fear of them.
No.
No?
Me neither, I feel like this is, this year, hey, is our best shot, we've been to the division around with Garrett two times already, you know? With Aaron Rodgers two times, and we ain't got no Aaron Rodgers in, um, in our way this time.
Right.
I feel like, you know, not saying I'm scared, but I think if we would have went to New Orleans next week, it wouldn't have looked good, cuz they already know we whooped they butt, you know what I'm saying, they would have been ready for us, I think it's the best thing for us to go into LA, cuz I feel like all they can, all they got is that passing game, and I feel like our cornerbacks can match up against their receivers.
Yeah.
You know, I don't see Gurley in that O-line man handling us, you know what I'm saying, I, I don't wanna say it, but I feel like we in the NFC Championship game now, I don't know, I'm not gonna say we going to the Super Bowl, but this is exciting, you know what I'm saying? Before I go, just play that war song for me.
Man, man, you know it ain't nothing but a thing, man, you little, you, wait, wait, you, you, look, 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 next time, next time you talk to him, I want you scream at your TV, you tell Todd Gurley, you are in Wakanda now, Todd Gurley will have nothing but dust and blood. Nothing. Thank you, sir, thanks for calling in, Jake. Oh, man, I can hear these people, um, River Valley, what up, man?
Gee.
All right, I got you off the phone, appreciate it, um, Pat from New Mexico, what's up, bro?
Hey, Voch.
What's up, man?
I, uh, what's that?
Nah, 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 what's good, what's up, what's that, what's that?
Well, I, I gotta tell you, um, I, I'm really looking forward to this game, I think it's, I think this is really gonna be a slugfest.
Yeah.
Um, I, uh, the, the only thing that concerns me is I've always felt for the past two or three years that our Achilles heel is playing against stud tackles, um, our stud defensive tackles tend to really give us fits.
Yeah.
Um, and, uh, as a career, their cornerbacks and their safeties are very opportunistic, uh, secondary, you know? Uh, now granted, uh, the, the one guy missed, uh, you know, he missed eleven games, twelve games, something like that, but, um, I mean, their defense, man, it ain't bad, but the one thing, they cannot stop the run, ain't never been able to stop the run. And I, uh, I think if we can set up the pass, or, or, you know, use the pass to set up the run, I think our, I think our running game will, will eventually just take over and destroy them.
I tell you what, uh, we just, you know, you know, we just watched a lot of film on Todd Gurley, and let me just be respectful here, Todd Gurley is an amazing elite player, probably the best defender, best defender, defensive player in the league, but we saw that he's a lot more effective as a pass rusher. You know, when you run directly at him, he gets lost in the funk sometimes, you know, uh, and I don't really fear anybody else on that, on that team. Now, now, Todd does make plays in the run game, you know, as, you know, he could just whip whoever's in front of him.
You keep saying Todd Gurley.
My bad, my bad, pardon me, uh, Aaron Donald, pardon me, I apologize, my bad, Aaron Donald.
Okay, okay.
Aaron Donald is a top-tier defender, but, um, he's not that great in the run game, he can whip people in front of him, he can get tackles for loss, but if you, if you put hands on him and kinda wash him a little bit, then he'll wash with you and get blocked, you see what I mean? Uh, we just show, 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 yeah, yeah, but as a pass rusher, that's when he's most dangerous and most, uh, most scary, in my opinion.
Now, I'll say this too, I do not fear their receivers, and I don't fear their offensive line, but they've got two nice, uh, uh, tight ends, and of course, Todd Gurley, you know, if maybe we can, uh, loosen that knee up a little bit, I don't wanna break it, but I'd like to loosen that knee up to where he can go sit on the sideline and ice it, you know?
Yeah.
But, uh, you know, they got two nice tight ends, though, and tight ends tend to hurt us a little bit, too.
Yeah, um, we, um, we looked up an injury report, and Gurley said that, uh, that he's feeling better, but he's not one hundred percent. Uh, he had a, uh, he had a really light walk, uh, uh, he had a light walk, walk through today, so that was interesting, uh, to just kinda see that.
Yeah, that means he's fucked, if you've sat for three, two games in a bye week, and you gotta, you know, basically four weeks before you play again, and you're gonna come out and say that you're not a hundred percent, yeah, my linebacker's gonna hurt you.
Yeah, we'll see, we'll see, and as far as their, um, their wide receiver core, I think Cooper Cup was the one that really kept their core together. Uh, he was pretty much like a, uh, like a go-to guy, or, or a safety valve for, uh, Jared Goff, and ever since Cooper Cup got hurt, you know, Jared hasn't real, he hasn't really been able to find a, find a guy that he has that level of consistent reliability in, so, um, that'll be interesting.
Yeah, mentally, that messes with golf, for sure.
Absolutely.
And, uh, I think that, uh, you know, uh, golf, man, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't give you a backup safety for golf, I'll keep my quarterback.
Yeah, I'm good to go, I'm good to go with that.
Hey, man, you, uh, keep up the good work, and, uh, man, I don't see your rifle, so I'm, I'm hoping it's around.
It's right there, I, I, um, I got the Glock here on the table, it's holstered and safe, and I have my tomahawk here, so if anybody, if anybody wants to feel safe, if anybody wants to feel safe, trust me, we're here, I even got my self-defense flashlight here with my little nasty little striker ridges and my strobe function, so we good to go, man, we safe over here.
Well, we safe over here too, brother, you have a nice night.
Yes, sir, Doski Woski. Uh, let's give these last minute shouts, shout-outs, then we're gone, that was the last call of the night, Kenneth Dixon, this is all super chats, by the way, Kenneth Dixon, Mark McQuestion, Jake Downey, Clarissa Vasquez, welcome, uh, River Valley University, he kicked off the, uh, the, uh, telethon. Um, Michael Greg Castillo, Jeremiah Peebles, um, Jake Downey, Dave Alexander, he knows he's the damn GOATs. Uh, Casey J, Casey J again, Casey J again, Dave Alexander, Casey J, okay, cool, 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 this is early, yeah, 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 Casey J, uh, Thor, Dave Alexander, and Asleep Gamer, I forgot how long we damn been here, this is, uh, going on a four-hour live stream, we been working, y'all been seeing me a lot today. Um, but it had to be done, so I'm probably gonna pull an all-nighter tonight, waiting for the NFL alumni to drop the film. Um, as soon as I get the Cowboys All Twenty-Two, the first film session we dropping is Van Der Esch and Jalen Smith. Uh, we're seeing what the linebackers did versus Seattle Seahawks, then we'll, pardon me, then we'll look at, uh, D-Law Randy Gregory, Cooper and Gallup, Dak and the pass protection, Zeke and the run blocking, and, um, Tyron Crawford, Malik Collins, and Antoine Woods, all right, we'll take a look at those guys there. Dez Malley dropped the five in the super chat, salute to you, sir, um, it's been an amazing couple of days, man, y'all really been, um, uh, supporting the channel monetarily, man, and I've really been blown away by the amount of, uh, the amount of, um, support you guys are showing, and it's really, it's really putting this thing in motion, um, the more that the, that the channel is supported monetarily, the more film that I can put out, that I can actually show. Um, sometimes, you know, I have to, I have to stick with film sessions that are gonna get views, cuz that's how we get paid, we get paid by, by, uh, by bigger views or whatever, but if we get some, like, like, if we get these big super chat, uh, live, live joints like we've been getting, or we get big donations in the PayPal and super chat, then we can do, um, any kind of film session y'all want, hell, we can look at Brett Mahers technique if you want to. Um, but, you know, that's just kinda, you know, the ebbs and flows of how this thing works, but I appreciate it, we got about six li, uh, six film sessions that I wanna do. Uh, we'll cross that road whenever we get there, as soon as I get my, uh, as soon as, as soon as the, uh, the, as soon as the plug hits me up, we good to go. And, uh, with that being said, tell Todd Gurley, I'm coming. Hell wrong with him, what they problem is, smoking they goddamn ass, y'all hold it down for the Doski Woski, the mighty fires free, peace, y'all, salute.